I would like to call the Prince William County School Board to order. A motion is in order for the approval of closed session agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jessie.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approves the closed session agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Ms. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
A second.
Any discussion, please vote. Let me put the vote up, please.
Okay, well, that's why I asked.
No, it is. It is. I'm sorry. All right, moving on to the motion to enter. Who didn't vote?
I didn't. It's me. I voted.
The vote is six yes, two not present. Vote, motion passed.
Moving on to the motion to enter closed session. A motion's in order.
Ms. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711, the Prince William County School Board enter closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss and consider assignment, appointment, performance, disciplining, and the resignation of specific employees, appointees or officers to the Prince William County School Board under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1 and 8. Two, to consult with Division Council and staff regarding specific personnel matters and threatened or impending litigation under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A17 and 8. Three, to receive information and discuss a confidential report provided to the school board by the Prince William County Schools O'Budsman under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1 and 8, and 2.2-3705.13. Four, to review and discuss with the superintendent and the Prince William County Schools O'Budsman the proposed evaluation instrument and proposed evaluation goals for the annual evaluation September of 2020 of the O'Budsman under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1 and 5. To discuss the performance, evaluate, and set performance goals for employee T20-19 and employee T20-20 under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1.
Do you have a second?
Ms. Chair.
Yes.
I second.
Ms. Zargarpur from the Coles District seconds. Please vote our discussion. Please vote.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
The Prince William County School Board will now enter closed session. Return to open session in approximately one hour. From closed session. We will move to 8.01 where we have a number today of closed session action items. A motion is in order. Okay, we will sort that out and move on, and we'll come back to that later on in the meeting, once we get the documents uploaded to 801 and 802. We're going to move on to the adoption of the closed session consent agenda 9.01. A motion's in order.
Ms. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session consent agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
I second.
Ms. Ralston seconds. Any discussion? Okay, and that's point 9.01. Please vote. Come on. I don't have a vote. Didn't pop up. Yes, please. Yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Moving on to the closed session certification, 10.01. A motion's in order. Ms. Williams.
Ms. Chairman, I move that pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3712, the closed session of the Prince William County School Board meeting of February 19th, 2020, be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed session meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Do you have a second?
I second.
Ms. Ralston seconds. Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Okay, excellent. We're going to move on to the positively PWCS presentation tonight, and we have two presentations. Dr. Superintendent Dr. Walts will introduce our first presentation. Thank you, Dr. Walts.
Thank you, Chairman Latif, members of the board. Tonight, we have two positively PWCS presentations, beginning with the Fred Lynn Middle School Step Team. The Step Team is organized and executed by the Omega U program with the support of Principal Brewer, administration, teachers, and staff. This is the first year for the co-ed Step Team at Fred Lynn. Omega U is the largest mentoring program in Prince William County with over 268 registered students, and is the largest male and female mentoring program. The team is coached by Ms. Ray Bell, Ms. Shannon Davis, Mr. Ahmad Andrews, and Mr. Michael Frazier. Welcoming now the Fred Lynn Middle School Steppers.
Okay, 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 okay. Are y'all ready?
Yes.
She said, "Are y'all ready?"
Yes!
Fred Lynn Steppers.
Fred Lynn! Step first, Fred Lynn! Fred Lynn!
Break it down now!
That was so cool.
And then we'll have Dr. Walts introduce the second.
Yes, we've got another great group. I'm very pleased to have Potomac Middle School here tonight to talk about an outstanding program that we have been working on for a few years. With the support of retired Deputy Superintendent Ray Darlington, the new aquaponics program at Potomac Middle School is thriving. Here to share more about the program is Principal Kevin Smith and students and staff from Potomac Middle School.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, School Board members, and Dr. Walts. My name is Kevin Smith, and as principal of Potomac Middle School, I'm extremely excited about the aquaponics program. At this time, I'd like to introduce to you our aquaponics team that is here at Potomac Middle School. Ms. Ben Youssef, our sixth grade math teacher. Ms. Nelson, our sixth grade language arts teacher. Mr. Rosieak, sixth grade social studies. Ms. Stone Hemmings, sixth grade science. Ms. Bodie, our instructional coach for language arts and science. Ms. Lightfield, our instructional coach for math. Retired Deputy Superintendent Ms. Darlington, who is not here this evening. Our guidance director, Mr. Corey Eaton. And Assistant Principal, Mr. Brian Coleman, who also supervises the aquaponics program. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Coleman.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, members of the school board, and Dr. Walts. My name is Brian Coleman. I'm the Assistant Principal at Potomac Middle School and Designated Administrator for our aquaponics program. In the time that I have become a part of this great team, we have visited Radnor Middle School, a model school for aquaponics, built six mobile aquaponic units, and are nearing the completion of our aquaponics lab that will be used by all students at Potomac Middle School. I would also like to thank Ms. Carolyn Custer, Director of Student Services, retired, and Ms. Tracy Hannigan, Deputy Director, Parks and Recreation and Tourism, for our recent meeting as we work towards a great partnership. I'd also like to extend my thank yous to Dr. Walts, Mr. Bixby, Mr. Wilk, for your continued support of this aquaponics program. At this time, if we could please cue the video.
Today, we are getting ready to plant seeds. We are preparing seeds which will be used in the sixth grade science class.
The lettuce seeds and the parsley seeds will be one quarter inch deep, and the spinach will be one half inch deep. We will place two seeds in each container and cover it with soil.
We have chosen to grow three types of plants. Here we have lettuce seeds, we have parsley seeds, and we have spinach seeds.
Here we have a growing station. On each shelf, we have a full spectrum of our light.
We are using a growing media and the water from the fish tank.
We can't wait to see them sprout!
Good evening, Chairman Latif, members of the school board, and Dr. Walts. My name is Ted Rosieak, professional educator leader for the Potomac Middle School Aquaponics. Before I begin, I want to personally thank Dr. Walts, Mr. Wilk, Mr. Bixby, for their continued support of this cutting-edge opportunity for the students, staff, and community at Potomac Middle. Dr. Walts has continued to support our vision from its inception in 2013 as an after-school activity to the present. Mr. Wilk is a regular visitor to the halls of Potomac, and his support for the aquaponic concept began his very first year as a representative of our school. The continued growth of the concept could not even have been attained without the continued support and guidance of Mr. Bixby. His guidance and knowledge regarding integrated education has enhanced the educational possibilities for our students. And finally, Ray Darlington. Dr. Walts, for all your accomplishments, your one failure was teaching Ray Darlington the finer points of retirement. Ms. Darlington works just as hard in retirement as she did at Grand Park when she led us there. And so I think it's fair to say, without Ray Darlington, Ray Darlington is indispensable when it comes to the success of the aquaponic program at Potomac. What is happening at Potomac is an example of what happens when collaboration between the leaders of our school district and the professional educators takes place. Thank you all for your support and dedication to the Potomac community. So what is aquaponics? Aquaponics is a symbiotic relationship between the fish and the plants. The fish provide the fertilized water and the nutrients to the plants, and the plants purify the water for return to the fish. Used in the classroom, this concept can be utilized as a tool to be significantly impact student learning and engagement. It authentically brings real-world learning into the classroom, and prepares our students to be future scientists and thinkers. When construction on the aquaponics lab was delayed, our teachers stepped up and built five mobile aquaponics units to be used in our classrooms. Rain, hail, sleet, nor snow has kept us from maintaining our energy and focus on creating a world-class experience for our staff, students, and community. We have not stopped at the school site, working with Ms. Darlington. A new partnership is evolving with the PWCS Parks, Recreation, and Tourism Office, under the leadership of Deputy Director of Parks, Recs, and Tourism Tracy Hannigan, along with the support from Carolyn Custer, retired PWCS Director of the Student Services. What better venues to grow our learners? We look forward to the continued growing partnerships with the PWCS professional community and the Potomac community as aquaponics continues to build at Potomac Middle School. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, members of the school board, and Dr. Walts. My name is Faza Ben Youssef, professional educator at Potomac Middle School. The PTMS Aquaponics experience is for all students. Starting at the critical sixth grade transition, students will be engaged in interdisciplinary study, recognizing that aquaponics learning is not in a silo, but integrates into language arts, social studies, math, science, and the related arts. Working with our librarians, we will create a dynamic classroom as students become authentic researchers and writers. Every student will be able to access student-created aquaponics videos made by their peers. We have introduced four aquaponics mobile units in every sixth grade science classroom. Students are working on their first scientific study, growing with an aquaponic system versus traditional soil farming methods. Their observations and conclusions will be shared with parents and family at the Potomac Aquaponics Family Night. Moving into the future, we plan to implement quarterly problem-based learning experiences so students acquire a deeper knowledge through active exploration of real-world challenges as they take ownership in their research and learning. And now I would like to introduce to you our students from the Urban Agriculture Club.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, members of the school board, and Dr. Walts. Our names are Amraya Natalia, Faison Damote, Bria Mohammed, and Louise, a group of sixth grade students at Potomac Middle and members of the Urban Agricultural Club. We are a group of students who decided to join the Urban Agricultural Club because we have never experienced working with plants and soil. We knew nothing about farming and the agricultural process.
We are learning how to plant and harvest in our outdoor garden and how to grow plants with artificial lighting indoors. We are also researching how aquaponic systems work and how we are building a mini aquaponic systems of our own.
We have many responsibilities that includes monitoring the water quality of the five aquaponic system at our school on a regular basis. We also feed the fish, make sure they are healthy, and we monitor the water levels and filtration system.
Because of the club, we have had the opportunity to become student leaders, and we are excited to come to school each day. We look forward to learning more about aquaponics.
Mr. Wilk.
I think a lot of the timeline was encapsulated with the discussion and what the presentation there. As I said, this has been something kind of in fruition, starting back in 2013 with Mr. Rosieak and his awesome team, Mr. Smith, Mr. Coleman, and the support of former Deputy Superintendent Ms. Darlington. So when I came on the board right away, I was quickly introduced to Ted Rosieak, quick right away, and brought into the Potomac family. And since that moment and that interaction, it's been a growing relationship with the building. Mr. Smith is one of my only principals who literally lets me have the free rein and walk around and talk to people, and I really appreciate that trust that he allows with that. And like I said, this program has been going. There's been a lot of teachers involved in the process through the start and the beginning. Started off with a bunch of aquariums with a lot of fish, issues that occurred with the timeline and different things that happened there. But with the ongoing support of the superintendent, Mr. Bixby, and the team, we were able to move forward, put that green house on the CIP, and make this program come to fruition. When I was there in the fall, the early stages of the construction were there. When I was there last month, slowly coming forward, the electricity setup. So this is very exciting. You know, delays happen, life happens, but I think this is going to be a great program. We talk about equity, and this is a great middle school program for this school, which really borders the Woodbridge-Potomac District. So I think it's an outstanding program, and thank you guys for coming tonight, and thank you for all you do.
Ms. Williams.
First, I'd like to thank Potomac Middle School for coming. I think it's wonderful that you're having a reset for your aquaponics program. It's exciting science, and I'm always a huge fan of integrated studies and anything that provides our students the opportunity to take control of their academic experience to the fullest. And then, secondly, I would just like to formally recognize Fred Lynn Middle School, the steppers that came. We've never had steppers before us at the school board. I think it's especially appropriate considering it is Black History Month, and it is because of the Black Greek Fraternities who brought stepping here. It was popularized in the late '80s and became pretty well-known, but it originated from West Africa, Gumbu, steppers who were individuals who were in coal mines. They used stepping to communicate because they could not physically hear each other through the sounds in the coal mines. So from where it started to where we have it today with fraternities and sororities, there are shows. We use it here in this community, in this, excuse me, in this county. Not only does Fred Lynn have a step team, Ripon has a step team, high schools have a step team, but it serves a purpose for learning your history, for boosting our children's self-esteem. It's a learning and art form, and it's continuing on tradition. So I would just like to thank Superintendent for his support, for having them here, Mr. Brewer, and all of our middle schools and high schools that facilitate step teams for our youth. It is just an exciting time, and I'm just over the moon that we were able to do something to recognize the students and all their hard work that they put in. And of course, I wanted to give a special shout-out to the gentleman, who is the only gentleman on the Fred Lynn Step Team, being sure to tell me that. So I wanted to make sure to tell him he did a fantastic job. I saw him being the line leader on the way out. And for those who don't know about stepping, I would encourage you to learn a little bit more, considering it is Black History Month. So thank you.
Ms. Jessie.
I want to thank Potomac for sharing. I think there's a similar, wasn't there a similar program at Porter? There is a similar program at Porter, and it's just a phenomenal program. Thank you so much to the Fred Lynn Steppers. Someone in the audience said, "Did you step when you were in college?" If I did, I don't remember. I think I would remember that. I was in a sorority. I think we did not do stepping. But I also wanted to ask the men from Omega Sci-Fi to please stand. I think they're in the audience. Could you please?
There's a few.
There's a few in the audience?
Yeah.
Thank you. Pasta Ellis? I didn't know Pasta Ellis was an Omega. Anyway. Oh, I'm sorry. The Omega U. You have done a phenomenal job, not just with the Fred Lynn Steppers, but those kids are involved in so many activities. I've gone to various activities, including you do things with colleges and universities, you name it, and they have, they look good. I saw them at the King Day Celebration, and they were dressed to kill, as they would say down south. But I just want to thank you for all that you do as a community servant. Thank you.
Mr. Kim. I just want to say to the aquaponics program, I think that's amazing. When I was in middle school, that was my science fair project. I grew lettuce and hydroponics. So it was something I was always interested in, and I think that's like crazy cool that you guys are doing that at like sixth grade. I was doing that in eighth grade, and you guys are doing it at a much higher level than me. So go out, win those science fairs, keep doing what you're doing. I think that's amazing.
Excellent. We're going to go back to 8.01 to complete our vote on the closed action. We only have one closed action item, and a motion's in order on 8.01.
Ms. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the annual performance evaluation instrument and the annual performance goals for the Prince William County Schools O'Budsman for the 2019-20 year as submitted and reviewed in closed session.
Do you have a second?
I second.
Ms. Ralston seconds. Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Motion passed.
Okay. Next, we are going to go to this very exciting part of our meeting this evening, and that is the hearing. No, we're not doing that. We have a, the public hearing for this year's fiscal budget. So I would, I get to do this really cool thing where I declare that a public hearing is now open on the subject of the school board's fiscal year 2021 proposed budget and CIP. Any citizen who has signed up to speak on this subject may do so when called upon. We are gonna, we have actually 18 people signed up to speak on the budget. We'll handle this the same as we do citizens' time. We'll call you up. If you come on up, you'll see the timer on the screen. When it gets to yellow, you got to start wrapping up. 10 means it's time to stop, and I will ask you to stop. And, and, and nothing personal, but we do that with each person. And I'm very excited to see this robust number of folks coming out to our public hearing. I'm very excited. I think it's a historic year and a historic budget for the entire Commonwealth on education, so I will get started first by asking Scott Beck, please come up to the podium. Scott Beck.
Whenever?
Yes, sir. Go.
My name is Scott Beck, and I am the senior pastor of St. Paul United Methodist Church in Woodbridge, Virginia. I'm here tonight with Voice, and I serve on Voice's Prince William County Schools team. I have a 12-year-old daughter who attends Beville Middle School and a 16-year-old daughter attending Hilton High School, and my wife is also a special education teacher in the Prince William Schools. First, on behalf of Voice, I would like to thank Dr. Wells for a very strongly proposed budget that makes many of the key investments that Voice has been pushing for, namely the $5.5 million in increased economically disadvantaged funding, the $1.1 million for additional social workers, and increased spending on pre-K. As you have heard, these specific issues were developed out of a listening campaign that Voice led in five Prince William Schools, Okaquan, Elizabeth Vonn, Dale City, Minneville, and Haymarket, and had face-to-face conversations with 400 parents about their vision for school communities. After-school opportunities for families who cannot afford these pay-to-participate programs, English learning opportunities for parents, and the need for additional school workers to deal with increased mental health and trauma were among the top issues that we heard. In October of last year, 600 Prince William County Voice leaders, including 125 parents and teachers from our partner schools, all gathered at St. Paul for a public assembly on these issues with Dr. Latif, now Board of Supervisors Chair Ann Wheeler, and others to ask for their support on Voice's schools' agenda. Dr. Latif, we appreciate your participation back in October and pledging to support these issues during the budget process. These issues are deeply important to me, not just because I have two daughters in school and a wife working there, but also because I've heard the stories from the students and also from my wife, who comes home often in tears, seeing how at IEP meetings, the students often have to do the interpretation for the parents because the parents have not been able to learn enough English yet, seeing how a number of these students, if they could just have a little more structure, a little more structure afterwards with these back-to-after-school programs that they can't afford to have. But the parents have to work two jobs. They have to. It's, it's a needed thing, but if they could have that structure, it would make so much of a difference. These and other issues are so important. I do want to underline real quick before I finish, one point of clarification on the proposed budget, that the $1.1 million to hire new social workers be divided between middle schools and elementary schools, and if possible, please help our five partner schools hire full-time social workers. Thank you for your time and for your commitment to Prince William County families. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Johnson. Brian Johnson. And while he's making his way up, if the others want to come up to the front row so they don't have to walk so far, Lori Stern, Reverend Clyde Ellis, Azucena Rodriguez, Dr. Kate Olson Flynn, Tiziana Batino, Alice Crowe, Richard Stark. Okay, Mr. Brian Johnson?
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Waltz, Chairman Latif, members of the school board. My name is Brian Johnson. I am a parent of a student of two little boys at Haymarket Elementary School. I'm also the lead pastor of Haymarket Church, which is a United Methodist Church that worships at Haymarket Elementary School. I'm there like every day of the week. I'm here also with Voice, and I participated in the parent listening campaign at Haymarket Elementary School last fall, where folks from Voice had face-to-face conversations with 100 parents about our hopes and our dreams for our kids and our schools. And I'm here to express my full support for the Voice budget priorities that are in Dr. Waltz's proposed budget. The $5.5 million increase in economically disadvantaged funding is something that matters to me as a parent and as a person who is invested in justice. The $1.1 million increase to hire additional school social workers, an increased funding for pre-K, all of these are extremely important. In particular, this evening, I want to focus on the need for social workers. Currently, our school, Haymarket Elementary, has 870 students enrolled. We have 280 houses being built within walking distance in the upcoming years, and we have one half-time social worker who is split between two schools. This just doesn't meet the needs of a large student population. The number-one identified need of the parents at our listening session was mental health challenges and other associated challenges. This is what we need, and even though Haymarket is not a Title I school, we still have roughly 100 students who qualified for free and reduced lunch. There is a variety of needs at our school. Something that is worth noting, so this week, Haymarket Elementary School, a family lost their home to a fire, and so our church and parents at the school have been partnering with the school to help support that family. And this is something that's being led by the school counselor, taking her out of her lessons, taking her out of the work that she would normally be doing, simply because there is not a social worker who is able to do that full-time. The social worker has been assisting, but she wasn't there on Tuesday when we got, they got the ball rolling on that work. Having a social worker who could help coordinate those resources would be huge. Having a social worker who could do early intervention would be huge. We are, I am very thankful for that $1.1 million for increase, for hiring of new social workers. But what I've heard is that it is focused exclusively on middle school students, and early intervention can be crucial in making a difference in a family's life. And so I would ask you to consider investing in elementary schools as well for these increased social worker hiring. Again, particularly the schools that have named this in that listening campaign were Okaquan, Elizabeth Vonn, Dale City, Minneville, and Haymarket, but all schools could use this help, early intervention. Thank you for your time and your hard work.
Lori Stern?
Good evening. My name is Lori Stern, and my address is on file. I am a proud teacher at Stonewall Jackson High School. Last year, I spoke in favor of the boundary proposal, only because of the resolution that was attached to it, which stated that Prince William County would increase funding for older schools and reformulate the allocation for economically disadvantaged or ED students. I knew our students' only hope in achieving some sort of equity was through fair funding and this board's promises. So I caved, and I supported a proposal that would result in making Stonewall High School more economically disadvantaged and more segregated. However, I stand before you this evening because I feel the promise was not really kept. Here's the issue as I see it. First, with almost the same amount of funding as other schools with site-based management, with schools with lower ED and ELL numbers, our principal, Dr. Nichols, must use these funds for updating more, replacing more, remediating more, and supporting more of our students. Second, because 56.9% of Stonewall students are economically disadvantaged, Stonewall doesn't bring in as much money as wealthier schools in athletic events, fundraisers, boosters, and PTSO memberships to offset these costs. An example, Battlefield's PTSO budget is $30,000 for this year. Stonewall had a great year. We had corporate donations. This year, the budget is $5,000. I ask you to consider the budget line items that would directly benefit our at-risk students. Stonewall will receive some natural light, which is appreciated. In the words of several students, "It will make Stonewall look less like a prison." Most concerning to me, though, is the budget calls for an increase of exactly $39 for economically disadvantaged high school students. This $39 increase is not enough. Two questions. What's the purpose for a higher allocation of funds for elementary students in the subgroups? And why is a gifted students' allocation almost $400 more than an economically disadvantaged student? There is room to revise this budget to create more funding to support Dr. Waltz's priority of creating equity. If I ruled the world, there would be a formula in place where central office takes the unique needs of individual schools into account and funds the school accordingly, and this budget would be revised to increase funding for high school economically disadvantaged students and English-language learners. FDR said, "The test of our progress is not whether we add more to the abundance of those who have much, it's whether we provide enough for those who have too little." These numbers are not what June's resolution promised. They are not enough. Please keep your promise and ensure we have equity. Thank you.
Reverend Clyde Ellis. Reverend Clyde Ellis.
Good evening. My name is Reverend Clyde Ellis, and my address is on file for you. I am pastor of Mount Olive Baptist Church over in Woodbridge, and I'm also one of the senior clergy leaders with Voice. I first want to thank Dr. Waltz for his strong proposed budget, and to thank in advance Dr. Latif and the board for your support of Voice's budget priorities. I and Mount Olive stand in overwhelming support of Voice's schools' agenda and stand firmly behind our five partner schools, Dale City Elementary, Elizabeth Vonn, Minneville Elementary, Okaquan, and Haymarket Elementary Schools. While Voice is here tonight, I'd like to provide a brief update on the work that we have been doing at the state level during the General Assembly to support you and the work that you're doing here in Prince William County. In the fall, other Voice leaders, along with myself, we met with Governor Northam to ask that he prioritize two of Voice's educational, education priorities in his budget, lowering the counselor-to-student ratio to 250 to 1, and make major investments into expanding pre-K. Throughout the General Assembly, over 150 Voice leaders from Voice member institutions have traveled to Richmond for in-person meetings with over 70 members of the House and Senate and nearly all of the key decision-makers around education budget priorities, and many of you I saw while I have been down there. And last week, Voice leaders generated hundreds of phone calls and emails to the heads of the appropriations and finance committees urging them to fully fund Governor Northam's substantial investments into pre-K, when we heard that there was a possibility that the full funding might be in jeopardy. Our hope is that these priorities will make it through the state's budget process intact and that they will help bolster our schools here in Prince William County. It's no great secret about my passion for pre-K. I started school in the '50s. Pre-K did not exist. Kindergarten did not exist. I started school in the first grade. In contrast, my son was able to attend pre-K here in Prince William County back in the late '70s, and I've always been proud to attribute credit where credit is due. Because of the great start that he had in pre-K, my son not only attended Harvard Medical School, but today he is a practicing plastic surgeon. And all of that is attributed to one simple fact, that when he went to the first grade, he could read and write, and he has never lost that advantage. Thank you, Dr. Waltz. Thank you, Dr. Latif. Thank you, board, and I thank you for your time tonight, and I look forward to working with you in the future.
Azucena Rodriguez?
Good evening. My name is Azucena Rodriguez, and I'm proud to be part of the PTO in Elizabeth Vonn Elementary School in Woodbridge. Go Wildcats! I'm a parent of two daughters, Alexa Lopez, who's in fifth grade, and Eva, who's in fourth. I'm here tonight with Voice to speak in strong support of the $5.5 million for economically disadvantaged funding and the $1.1 million for additional social workers in Dr. Waltz's proposed budget. In the fall of last year's, Voice worked closely with five elementary school, Elizabeth Vonn, Okaquan, Minneville, Dale City, and Haymarket, to run a list, listening campaigns with parents. Together, we spoke face-to-face with almost 400 parents. We asked them a simple question. If you could change something about your school or your neighborhood, what would that be like? Where would you start? We heard a few prior, we heard a few priorities loud and clear. The first was the need of after-school enrichment opportunities. If Vonn had more after-school enrichment programs, it will make a huge difference in our kids' life, and that includes my children's. A lot of our parents at Vonn work long hours and can't be present when their kids arrive home from school. This mean we have lots of children come to empty houses with nothing positive to do. Most of our family can't afford to pay expensive private after-school programs. If we had enrichment-like after-school program for math and reading and activities like soccer, basketball, or even flag football, it will benefit our children and even get kids excited about their education. The second issue is giving parents an opportunity to learn English, which is a huge issue at our school. Many parents at our school are new to this country, and they don't know, speak English. Having an English language program at our school where parents feel comfortable and supported will make a big difference, and I've seen firsthand. My husband completed a six-month SOL class, and he went from English Speaker 1 to English Speaker 4 in only six months. With additional economically disadvantaged funding, Vonn and other school could provide these programs, which will be amazing. Vonn also desperately needs more social workers, so ask to the board, please prioritize social workers to Title I elementary school to keep the $1.1 million in the budget. Lastly, we stand in strong support of Dr. Waltz's proposed spending on, on spending pre-K, which is another priority that is deeply important to parents in our country and to Voice.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Kate Olson Flynn?
Good evening, school board, Chairman Latif, and Dr. Waltz. I'm here tonight to continue to advocate for a budget that reflects equity in our classrooms and communities. It can be done. I began my career as a bilingual teacher in an urban district in Los Angeles. The school in which I taught was located on the flight path of LAX. You could look up and see faces in the windows of the airplane as they flew over. This district was approximately 96% Latino and Spanish-speaking, with most of the students on free and reduced lunch. Because of the students' language background and the fact that the parents, most of whom were immigrants from Mexico who could not speak English, the school district heavily invested in hiring bilingual teachers and administrators in order to build connections between the school and the community. That is part of equity. This district's community-school connection took time and money to achieve. The district partnered with medical schools to come and provide free healthcare and dental care. It established ties with the local universities that sent their student teachers to develop their teaching skills in their classrooms, and it invited university researchers to study curriculum in the schools to help improve instruction for culturally and linguistically diverse populations. Improved test scores were one measure of achievement, but we achieved something more than a statistic. Community schools that supported the families and children and showed them that our system was one of promise, inclusion, and care for all students. Prince William County can achieve equity, too. The Division is blessed with a racially, culturally, and linguistic, linguistically diverse population that- diverse population that has many gifts to share. But it takes listening to all our communities and their voices and needs. In other words, a serious look at how money is invested in our schools and how it is best to educate all students to their potential. The budget has some strengths but falls short of delivering equity. For example, giving all kids a computer in the name of digital equity sounds good, but it doesn't work. There are no shortcuts for computers. Computers are not a substitute for teachers, counselors, social workers, and aides. Technology does nothing to help vulnerable students feel safe and valued in their education. Learning happens through participation and interaction with caring, knowledgeable teachers, peers, and administrators. While the budget provides $213 for each poor student in grades 6 through 12, that number is not enough to help the older schools with at-risk kids. Newer, higher-income schools gain additional funds that exceed their budgets from their gifted students, booster and PTSO fundraisers, ticket sales, club sports, private tutoring, and other money that is readily available to them. $213 doesn't even cover their lunch debt for disadvantaged students. We need bold investment in our economically disadvantaged students to help all our schools achieve before you can claim that a budget delivers educational equity and achievement for all. Thank you.[681.01][681.01][applause]
Tiziana Botino.
Good evening, Board. My name is Tiziana Botino. My address is on file. You've seen me a few times already, so I'll just get to the point. In the proposed budget report, Superintendent Waltz highlighted that the sixth priority for this budget is sustainability, yet that is hardly reflected in practice. In the 17-minute remark from the last meeting, this is what we heard about sustainability. Quote, "I'm also proposing the funding needed for a study to determine how we might best proceed in making our school more sustainable." End quote. That's it. Based on the actual document on the proposed budget, this translates to $25,000 to spend of, quote, "one-time funding feasibility study green schools," end quote. This amount or a target is not even close to enough. We already know from schools all around the country and within our own state that net-zero schools make economic sense by saving thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars in energy bills while decreasing our schools' carbon footprint. A costly study just to assess what is needed would more likely come to the same conclusion as energy efficiency, more natural, the energy efficiency and more natural light and renewable sources of energy are the most impactful ways to green our schools, and they are all initiatives that are already included in net-zero building designs. Furthermore, if we waited for the study to take any significant action, sustainability means we will have to wait years before taking additional action. Not to mention that it costs significantly more to retrofit schools to be net-zero-ready compared to incorporating this in the building plans from the very beginning. The budget includes a $4.1 million investment in a stadium. It's absurd to waste such a huge amount of money in improving one stadium, improving, not building, just improving, costs $4 million, and not in making a smart, long-term investment in the buildings that our children spend most of their childhood in. We can begin taking action right now by issuing a request for information to invest in building designs to make school buildings net-zero. From my understanding, it's a completely cost-free way to assess feasibility and plan next steps. I'm awaiting a response from Mr. Wallingford to know for sure whether there'll be any costs involved, so I'm hoping to get a response soon. But from my understanding, it's free, and we can start doing that right now. Meanwhile, our neighboring School Board members in Fairfax County recently unanimously passed a motion to include net-zero language in their capital improvement program and have unanimously approved an RFI last November to electrify all of their school buses and vehicles by 2030. We can and must do better than this. Students and parents are taking sustainability of our schools seriously. It's past time that the board and staff begin to do so as well. Thank you.[864.23][864.23][applause]
Good evening. My name is Alice Crow, and I'm a Prince William County resident and a member of Mothers Out Front and a proponent of net-zero schools. Net-zero schools, as you are probably aware, are simply schools that produce their own energy through renewable sources, such as solar and geothermal. They produce more energy than they use, and they emit no pollutants. What is not to like? I am here tonight to comment on the proposed budget of the $25,000 for a one-time feasibility study on green schools. Green schools, as I understand them, have three pillars: to reduce environmental impact, to increase the health and well-being of students, and to increase environmental and sustainable literacy for all graduates. I support all of those goals, especially the sustainability literacy. That is critical for students to be educated in that. But they do not go far enough. If a study is done at all, we would prefer that a study be done on the feasibility of net-zero schools. The Virginia General Assembly has passed a bill recognizing that global warming caused by human activity that increases emissions of greenhouse gas emissions has resulted in a climate and ecological emergency. Virginia may be the first state to pass such a declaration, although hundreds of municipalities across the U.S., including Dumfries, have already done so. So, given the state of emergency, do we have time to do a study? Studies are often undertaken with the best of intentions, but they can also delay acting on a problem. We already know that net-zero schools are feasible. Arlington County is doing it. Fairfax County is doing it, and so must Prince William County. We don't have to recreate the wheel. Why are we lagging behind? We need to act, and act now. Finally, if a study is done of net-zero schools, $25,000 is a token amount, especially when compared to other budget items. For example, over $4 million for stadium enhancement at Vrensville High School. Really? The School Board has a responsibility to make sure that its priorities are in the right place. In my view, the money allocated for a study would be better spent to develop blueprints that incorporate renewable energy design from the beginning. Again, we ask the School Board to take action. Commit 100% net-zero emission schools in Prince William County by 2020. Develop blueprints for new schools and incorporate renewable energy design by 2021. Retroify existing schools to incorporate net-zero design principles to the extent practicable, and reach the goal of net-zero emission schools in Prince William County by 2035. 15 years is a long time from now. We believe these timelines are reasonable and attainable and will provide a better and more sustainable future for our children. Thank you.[1062.78][1062.78][applause]
So I'll call up the next group. Richard Stark is next, and then you can come on up front. Vera McShane, Aurora Hurtado, Jennifer Gilli, Charles Ronco, Sandra Kern, Nathan Moore. Mr. Richard Stark.
Hi, good evening. My name is Richard Stark, and my address is on file. I am standing on Earth. We are all on Earth. Earth is a ball that weighs about 13 billion trillion pounds. It is spinning about its axis about 1,000 miles per hour, and it is traveling through the vastness of space at approximately 67,000 miles per hour. How do I know this? How do you know this? How do we all know this? Science. Science tells us this. We have been studying this for a long time. It doesn't matter if I'm a liberal, if I'm a conservative, a libertarian, even a vegetarian. It doesn't make a difference. The Earth is the ball. It weighs a lot. It is spinning fast, and it is moving. Sometimes, science tells us things that we disagree with. And right now, climate change is one of those things. The National Academies of Science, Engineering, and Medicine, which is appointed by Congress to advise Congress, to advise our elected officials, and to invite us, advise us, the public, on matters of science, have clearly stated, climate change is real. Climate change is happening. Climate change is happening because of us. Climate change is happening because we're burning fossil fuels. Climate change is not going to be good for us, and we need to act. We do not have 20 years. We do not have five years. The time to act is now. We are inside the Kelly Leadership Center. This building houses the institution of the Prince William County School Board, the institution which parents entrust to raise our children to be leaders in this county, leaders in this nation, and leaders on this earth. Today, parents are calling upon the School Board to live up to the vision of Mr. Edward Kelly and lead the public schools and lead the county on climate change. Superintendent Waltz has proposed a $25,000 study for green schools, which is a small step for a man. The time is now for the Board to take one giant leap and propose the hundreds of thousand dollars required to address climate change. Thank you so much for your service to our community.[1248.40][1248.40][applause]
Vera McShane.
Good evening. My name is Vera McShane. My address is on file. I'm with Mothers Out Front and with the Prince William Climate Action Network. I'm just going to follow up what my friends said. I understand that $25,000 have been set aside to make schools more sustainable. I would like to share the name and the phone number of the architect who designed the Discovery School in Arlington. We had a conference call with him, and he said he would be more than welcome to talk to you all. And I'm just going to hand it over to the secretary. Thank you very much.
Aurora Hurtado.
Good evening, School Board members, Chairman Latif, and Dr. Waltz. Aurora Hurtado, my information is on file. As you have heard, I know, I'm sorry, I know you have heard this many times, but Woodbridge High School lost its fine arts programs in 2016 when the program was moved to Colgan. We have not received a new program since then. The 13th High School is opening in the next school year, and they will feature an awesome specialty program. I recognize we cannot expect a similar program at Woodbridge because we do not have the facilities to accommodate it. Just one more reason to consider moving long-needed renovations to our older schools ahead of new construction on the CIP. The proposed budget needs to be adjusted to ensure that Woodbridge gets a new, at least one new specialty program. Different members of our community have different ideas of what the ideal program would be, but we all agree that we need one. It is very difficult to pull parents or build excitement to gain consensus on what the ideal program would be without knowing that we will actually get one. But please know, we want one, and we want to work with you and with the school community to ensure that Woodbridge can get a new specialty program in addition to any projected CT programs that we may get. We need to be able to support and encourage students who are entering the workforce right after high school, and we also need to ensure that we are preparing and empowering students who are taking the college route. This poster created by one of fellow mom illustrates the inequitable distribution of specialty programs in our county, and it didn't include the three programs that are being added to Garfield and the new programs coming to Stonewall. We shared the excitement for their new programs, but we also hope that Woodbridge gets the same treatment. Right now, we have AP Scholars, like pretty much every other school in the county. We have Project Lead the Way, like pretty much every other school in the county, so I'm not feeling very special. I mean, they're important, but I think we would benefit from additional programs. Another major equity issue is how a school launch debt is covered in our county. Every year, there's approximately $300,000 to $400,000 in school meal debt accrued through our schools. At schools with a small population of disadvantaged students, the school community may be able to help cover those costs through fundraisers and donations, but schools with a larger proportion of disadvantaged students are burdened with having to pay that debt from their budgets. Dr. Waltz, please consider centralizing that debt so schools are not burdened with having to pay for it from their budgets, but maybe estimate at a school, at a district level, so that can be part of the budget instead of furthering the inequities in our system. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Charles Ronco.
All right. Good evening. My name is Charles Ronco. My address is on file. I'm sure you've all seen my face plenty of times. First of all, I want to say thank you very much to the members of the School Board that I've recently been in contact with regarding this budget and several other issues. I want to bring us all back a little bit to last spring when we were dealing with the issue involving the resolution and the boundary issues of 13th High School and Stonewall Jackson High School. In that resolution, whether you liked the boundary issue or not, the resolution was good. It worked out. It was what we all wanted, and it's what we all agreed on. And there were three pieces to that resolution, and one of them has been definitely dealt with. Thank you very much for dealing with the two additional specialty programs at Stonewall. That's awesome. Great. Now, item number one: adjust the budgetary model in such a way that it directs additional funding to those schools. Consideration should be given to increasing the supplemental allocations for economically disadvantaged students and creating new supplemental category for older schools. So that really deals with two pieces. One, directing additional funding and creating a new category. So, one can talk about directing additional funding because apparently we're spending $213 for economically disadvantaged students in K through 5, sorry, $810 for K through 5 economically disadvantaged students, but only 213 when they get to middle and high school. So apparently, we've fixed poverty. As soon as you go from fifth grade to sixth grade, you're not poor anymore. So, that's great. I'm not really sure how that works, but I'd like to see the numbers. We have also, the second item, which was establishing a budget priority to direct additional funds to address infrastructure and equipment requirements as identified at the school level at Tier 1 schools, as identified by the Infrastructure Task Force. I do not know if the Infrastructure Task Force has gone ahead and found those issues, but I'm sure that if we reached out to the schools, we could find them. But they have not been addressed in this budget. And I would very much like to know if they have been, because if they have, I would easily eat crow. Now, I have one, I've talked before about subs and TAs that don't have a living wage, and I've also realized that there is $1.2 million in central office jobs that are being added into this budget. Those are permanent positions. So that means $1.2 million of our budget is going to be sucked away into central office every single year from here on out. That involves deputy superintendents, that involves secretaries, that involves other staff members, and that's a lot of money. $1.2 million is nothing to be shied away from. And one place, one that I thought about, I was like, okay, so we're adding money, but we're not really talking about where we're taking it from. There, we've got $4 million going towards, as my other fellow citizens have mentioned, there are $4 million going into issues of your one-to-one tablets, but you're adding a half a million dollars onto a $3 million budget for textbooks that no one uses. Thank you so much.[1710.01][1710.01][applause]
Sandra Kern.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Kern. My address is on file, and I have a student in Prince William County in middle school. January 2018, I came before this board to address concerns that my son had to face. To be short and recap, his experience has a lasting impact on his learning. Basically, my child was 12 years old with an IEP on file and handcuffed on the side of Route 1 with an issue on a general education bus. He hasn't forgotten that day. Here I am, two years later, with multiple tests, still needing to address this board for safety and an equal education. Our students need understanding with a superior-trained staff and safe learning environment. Sadly, the inequity I've seen. In this budget, special ed needs full funding, additional staff training, and equity in everyone's education, no matter the socioeconomic or their disability. With the desire for my son to get his world-class education as advertised, his school location was changed to another school in the district with highly suggested programs my son so desperately needed. The staff was welcoming and full of hope. However, now, they might probably be wondering, is this child teachable or misbehaved? Well, I assure you, he's teachable, and the learning, he's trying to self-advocate. One issue that I need to bring forefront is dyslexia. They need to follow the IEPs closely. With no more fluff in the IEPs, I want to see services delivered. Those 50 trained special educators in your budget to benefit our children need to be inclusive and come to fruition. Anxiety is a symptom of dyslexia and medical disabilities for my son. He has had several negative experiences in falling middle school. For my student, it's more about just reading. It's really learning differently, teaching differently. Reading is a basic life skill that all children need. Let me say to you, repeating 2018, I have learned so many new things about education in this process. Children need their advocating voice. As parents, we're not supposed to watch our children fail because they learn differently. I can say I'm not seeing the most appropriate timing for changes to help my son. I'm exhausted with negative behaviors and no changes. Behavior is an action when a child's needs are not being met. Will your budget truly extend to all children with disabilities? Now, let me give you the math equation. I have an upcoming ninth grader with a fourth-grade reading level. Ideal or world-class? Let me put it to you in numbers. Nine minus four is five. Yes, five years. My son doesn't have his education back. Passing him along doesn't do good. It's more harm. Changing the delivery of the material and supporting his needs and his way of learning is what this board needs to be accountable in funding and responsibility. Think outside the box or the cookie cutter classroom. Our teachers truly need support, just as much as our children.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nathan Moore.
My name's Nathan Moore. I'm a resident of the Coles District. My mom used to be a teacher at Wilson Elementary, actually, for two years. So I don't need to have attended the presentation last night to know that our schools are wildly underfunded. I know that this fiscal year, '21 through '25, I believe, is one of the biggest fundings for our school in Prince William County, but, you know, it's still not enough. And I acknowledge that there's still a lot of stuff everyone wants to do that, you know, was cut from the budget. And I also want to recognize that I stand in solidarity with everyone else that's come before me, and I could speak forever on the issues we need to address, having been a student of the county and my mom being the teacher. That said, I'm officially here to stand in solidarity with the women and the gentlemen before me on climate change, because we only have 10 years, I believe, until we do irreversible damage to our climate. So I also support this net-zero school, and I also don't really think that $25,000 is enough of an investment, especially considering how long it will take. We also want to invest in our kids. We all want to see our community flourish, but if you want to invest in the future, this is really a pressing issue. I recognize that there's a lot of spinning plates, but climate change is like the elephant in the room that isn't really standing in the corner and more like about to knock over all of your plates, so we can't just ignore it. Thank you for your time. That's all I have. Thank you.
Nicole King Campbell. And I'll call up the rest of the folks. Mary Ann Arcelli, I think, or Arcini, Jamie Van Echo, Willie Deutsch, and Jennifer Gilli, if she's back or here. Ms. Nicole King Campbell.
Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Latif, board members, Dr. Walz. My name is Nicole King Campbell. I am a parent of two students in Prince William County, two students in high school whose buses leave at the same time, one at Stonewall and one at Colgan. When I go to Colgan, I almost feel guilty because of the disparities in the building versus Stonewall. For example, when I get orchestra lists from one school, it's organized in a different way than the other school, Stonewall, because of the needs of the students and affordability of the things that they need to get. When I first arrived in the county, I heard myths about Stonewall. I was really ready to hear these excuses because the name alone had turned me off. My husband and I even, we're military or he just retired, we even spent thousands of dollars to move into the good school district. But thankfully, my daughter was way smarter than us. She found that Stonewall was the best school for her. They have amazing teachers, amazing advocates, and amazing students like Benjamin Kim. Stonewall needs additional resources. Our school does look like a prison, but inside, the hearts and the innovation of the people there need more support. I work in Herndon. It takes forever to get home, and some of my parents work two to three jobs. They can't get to the meetings. They don't have the funds to help us raise the additional funding. And I discovered this year, when we got amazing support between Wegmans, Micron, and Dunkin' Donuts, that we have very hungry students. I mean, I was standing up in a meeting, trying to get students, parents to help pay for their children's SAT prep, and I realized this is ridiculous because they can't even afford food. I'm really grateful for students like Benjamin, who came up with this remarkable program on his own to help prepare students for the SAT, but the fact that our principal has to take from his funds to help feed our students is ridiculous. I'm really grateful for settled the debt this year. They helped us with $8,800 worth of school debt. I mean, we really have students that need food so that they can learn better. So please take that debt out of the school. Let the principals be innovative and do what they can to provide additional programs. I just spent the weekend with George Mason to come up with another innovative, like Breakfast with Engineers, but we need that money out of the principal's budget so that they could do more with the students. Thank you very much.
Jamie Van Echo.
Good evening, members of the school board, Dr. Walz and Dr. Latif and other people here, all the other superintendents on the sides. I am here today because I would like to talk about a very tiny line in the budget. I am grateful that you are here serving my daughter and my son, and I've used the Office of Special Education's Parent Resource Center multiple times as both a parent and as a professional. Right now, there is a person there, she's the parent coordinator, who has a part-time position, and I'm advocating for her full-time position. The reason why is because this person coordinates several services and educational opportunities for parents of people with special educational needs. Students with disabilities make up about 10%, about 11% of all Prince William County students, based on a 2015-2016 fall report, it's the closest one I could find, which is about 9,657 students. Three years later, there were 9,992 students, which is an increase of 335 students with an IEP. That does not include students with a 504 plan, which are students who are identified with this disability but do not receive specialized instruction, but still require support in some way or another. The Office of Special Education's Parent Resource Center provides us as parents with opportunities to learn how to help our children be self-advocates, and we heard earlier from other parents who are concerned about their children and the needs that they have at home and outside. The parent coordinator position is currently part-time at this time, and it is critical and fiscally responsible to make that position full-time, because you're going to support a lot of people with just a little bit of money, and you're going to be supporting special education, which is my baby. I also know that half of the school board is very closely aligned with special education needs, either by family or by practice, and I know that it is critically important to you as well. So thank you so much for considering budgetary needs of the special education community, special education students from pre-K to transition. Transition is an incredibly important part of that, and one of my favorite things that the Parent Resource Center does is hook us up with Parent Educational Advocacy Training Center, which is PTC, and it helps us and it partners with them for critical parent educational supports. So thank you. I'm running out of time. I hope to see you guys again, and thanks for making my first time at the school board presenting very easy. Have a good night.
Thank you. Mr. Willie Deutsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the school board. Today is an exciting budget cycle because while the money is still being balanced out, it's going to be the largest budget that the school board has been able to work with. And with that comes an incredible opportunity, and that opportunity is to make sure two things. One, that we can provide as high a return on investment for the educational opportunities for our students with that additional money. And second, to make sure as much of that money goes into the classroom to provide that direct opportunity for our students. And so, as we work through the budget season, please make sure to take your time, work through these proposals, use the work sessions as aggressively as possible to dig in, make sure that those things happen. One of the things that we have to make sure happens during this budget cycle is that money is put into the classrooms as much as possible. And last summer, I met with a number of teachers from Stonewall Jackson, met with a number of student leaders from Stonewall Jackson High School, Mr. Trendman and myself. We met for over four hours, talked through ways to help them. And the resolution that was passed, passed overwhelmingly, and it should be one of the top priorities in the budget, because it was a funding priority that was voted on overwhelmingly by this board. And so I would strongly encourage the board to make sure that that resolution is fully funded to help address some of the critical equity needs in that community that were brought up throughout the spring of last year. And, you know, just looking at the budget, there are central office spots that we can look at. I had to chuckle because two years ago, there was an addition to the Kelly Leadership Center proposed that was struck. It's back in, and it's back in the exact same year that it was struck from before. There are extra assistance for the superintendent. There's numerous central office positions that should be reviewed and looked at first, but there should be ways prioritized to make sure that the funding that was agreed to last June for Stonewall happens and that we support those kids. That work so hard to speak out. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Jennifer Gilli.
Sorry, from one banned thing to the next. Good evening. My name is Jennifer Gilli, and my address is on file. In 2016, Parents Who Care came to these meetings, and I decided to speak because of my two sons who chose to play football at Woodbridge High School. We got together and noticed many facility issues at Woodbridge, especially relating to football. My boys were on unsafe fields, drainage issues, safety issues, not to mention the trough in the restroom. We came to speak up to help get things fixed, and we're told, no one ever told us about these problems. I bet you all wish you could take those words back now. We are still fighting for equity and now have gotten a few more people on our side. The only problem is that this is not the way I would have liked, to get more attention for our school and our community. The more we come to these board meetings, the more we hear about issues and equity in this county. This is a sad situation that should not be drawn out any longer. These parents and the community leaders are here for our children. What is this telling everyone in the county and at the high school level? How is this world-class when you can't show class by allowing this to continue at Woodbridge? I know there are parents and teachers out there now hoping these parents will stop and go away. There are people thinking this is bad publicity, and Woodbridge parents need to stop. This is 2020. This is wrong, and this has got to be a priority for the board and for you, Dr. Walz. Thank you.
Okay. There being no other citizens indicating that we should speak on the subject, as noted by...
Mary Ann Arcuni. Did I miss one? Mary Ann Arcina? Arcuni. Okay, so I'm sorry. I skipped that one. My apologies.
Good evening. My name is Mary Ann Arcuni. My address is on file. I am here tonight to comment on the sixth priority outlined in the budget, which includes sustainability. I am asking for you to commit to a much more aggressive objective to tackle this issue, and the only way to do that is to begin investing in net-zero school building plans this year. Through issuing a request for information, we don't have to wait to initiate a $25,000 study to work on sustainability. This budget proposal is too little, too late. We cannot afford to wait until the next budget session and a study to tackle our energy usage and the school's large carbon footprint. Please include in your budget an amount to invest in a new design for our school buildings prototype to make them net-zero so we can begin saving money and help our planet sooner rather than later. Thank you.
That being said, there's no other citizens indicating they wish to speak on the subject. I declare the public meeting hearing closed. I wanted to just quiz the board members. Would you like to take a break now, or would you like to take a break after citizen comments for the normal meeting? Any thoughts?
Yeah.
After? After.
I've, after.
Okay, and she's for before. After before? After? After. Okay. Okay, so we're going to continue on to the beginning of our public meeting. I'd like to call the public, the meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. There'll be a moment of silence at the request of Mr. Justin Wilk of the Potomac District. Next, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance, if we have any student or anybody who'd like to lead. If not, Mr. Kim, would you like to lead, please?
United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on to the approval of the public meeting agenda, motion is in order. That'll be 15. Do you have a motion? Ms. Jessie.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second? Ms. Rawson, seconds. Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous. Motion passed.
Moving on to the adoption of the consent agenda, motion is in order. A motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that, excuse me, that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second? Ms. Rawson, seconds. Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous. Motion passed.
Next, we'll have the, this is the time on the agenda for the student representative. Mr. Kim will speak and have an opportunity to share his interests and concerns. Mr. Kim.
Thank you so much for having me here tonight. So I'm going to share about the student senate and our committees and what, some student feedback and what I'm currently working on. First, I just want to give thanks to a lot of people who have helped. working on. First, I just want to give thanks to a lot of people who have helped me and fellow reps and the senate with our endeavors. Thank you, Mr. Gervon, Mr. Bassett, Mrs. Viola, the PWEA, Mr. Angry, Ms. Goss, Ms. Denise, Mr. Chiroki, Ms. Slater, Ms. Hodson, Mr. Supan, Dr. Nichols, and all the high school teachers who have helped administer these surveys. And finally, Dr. Latif, I saw later on this agenda a suggestion for the study of later start times, and I'm thrilled that that is going to be discussed. So, thank you, guys, the board, for recognizing.
And feel free to weigh in on that discussion as we do that later.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I personally believe that, on topic of later start times, that these can be implemented as soon as the '22-'23 school year. California, which I talked about a little bit last time, they added Section 46148 to their education code in October 2019. So, this section basically gives high schools until the start of the '22-'23 school year to adjust to the 8:30 start time. So, we can do this, too. If we start now and make a plan of attack to how to get later start times, and for the public, hold educational forums, figure out the numbers, and one year from now, in the next budget season, we can see this on the priority list, and that would be amazing. So, now I'm going to talk a little bit about the student senate. So, for the student senate, we have four committees. Tahaer talked a little bit about this last time. These are essentially, they essentially culminate our goals for this year, much like a fiscal priority. The first committee is unity, and it is focused on, well, unity amongst high schoolers and students across the county, because a lot of students have come up, and they don't really know anything about high schools across the county, and I myself was previously guilty of this, and they want to do a little bit of networking and kind of open their minds a little bit. So, one thing we're working on is called the All-for-One Ball, which is like, it's a prom for special education students. This was held last year by Sasan Faraj. The ball will be held here on May 9th from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. And so, thank you to Ms. Nelson, Ms. Minor, and Mr. Wilk for helping us with this. The second committee is Equity, Perfect Timing, which deals with talking to each school's administration to see how that high school's budget is being used. So, we also do send out surveys, asking for students' feedback on how their schools could be improved. The third committee is Education. We heard a lot about specialty programs tonight, and we are working towards educating middle schoolers, specifically eighth graders, about the specialty programs that are available to them. Me personally, when I was in eighth grade, I did not know anything about specialty programs, and I thought IB was about becoming a bachelor. Yeah, so, as we now know, with the new $1 million Garfield Culinary Program, Stonewall's firefighting, aviation management, maintenance, and environmental engineering, these are a lot of great, and there's many more. These are great opportunities, and we should put them on a pedestal and advertise them well. So, that's kind of what students want to do. And an idea that my school specialty program coordinator and I had was to have high school students go to the feeder middle schools and help teach or do a project. I saw the battlefield students went to a middle school, an elementary school, and did that, and it just looks like a blast. And I think that this would enrich learning. It would bridge the age gap, divide, and also promote specialty programs in an indirect but effective way. And the fourth and final committee is Mental Health. We are collecting student input on their well-being, sleep, productivity, and their relationship with their counselors, and many more things. And as a mental health committee, we are advocating for later start times as well as Mental Health Days, which I talked a little bit about last meeting. The concept of Mental Health Days is gaining massive momentum in the school systems. In fact, the whole state of Oregon passed House Bill 2191, which allows students to be excused if they are concerned about their mental health. Mental Health Days have been implemented here in Virginia, down in Montgomery County, and we here can do it, too. Regulation 724-1, yes, describes what constitutes an excused absence. So, the first bullet point on this regulation says, quote, "personal illness of the student," end quote. That's what makes an excused absence. So, what has to be done to make a Mental Health Day is to add something like, "personal illness, mental or physical of the student." Now, this, that right there would be a statement from the board that we care about students' well-being. We want to reassure them in policy that we're there for them. And if you want to be a little more precise with the language, I understand that there's many things that had to go on behind the scenes to get those implemented, but it's definitely possible, and I'm very optimistic that it will be discussed. So, thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kim. It's just fantastic. So, moving on to citizen comment time. Citizen comment timed on the agenda, not agenda items. It looks like we have, let's see, how many people for citizen comment time? Sorry. 14 previously signed up, and then it's about 18 again for citizen comment time. We'll do about 10 at a time. Everyone that has signed up in advance will have a chance to speak. If we are still within our 30-minute window, we will go forth with the remaining speakers at the door, although I'm pretty sure we'll try to squeeze in everyone. I will call the first 10 names, and then ask that you take a seat in the front row. So, the first 10 are Willie Deutsch, Heather Deputy, Catherine Purnell, Cheryl Elsmore, Riley Ocasey, Emmett Fletcher, Heather Abney, Cozy Bailey, and Swanell Wiggins. You will have three minutes to speak, and the clerk will keep the time. The lights on the monitor will indicate your progress. The yellow light will signify that you should sum up your position. The red light indicates your time is up and you should stop. Please use proper decorum and manners while at the podium. If you do not do so, you will be asked to step aside. Please give your name and address for the record when you approach the podium. Our first speaker is Mr. Willie Deutsch.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. Want to address three board matter issues coming up at the end of tonight's meeting. First one is Item 21.01. There are a number of policies, and it's my understanding that Ms. Heebner would love your questions. So, be sure to ask very thorough questions on that topic. Secondly, secondly, Item 21.03. Item 21.03 is a very important issue that's probably long overdue, but I think it's, and the deputy clerk and the clerk should definitely be reporting to the board as they serve the board. But this, the motion as stated here is very vague, and I think as you all work through the motion specifying either the board members by title, or whether it's a chair or vice chairman, specifying by title is very important. Part of the motion's missing, and so I'm not sure what the full intent is, but if, as it seems to read, it would designate a particular board member by a name, that would just be a very odd way to do a motion. So, just work through that as you're doing that. Thirdly is Item 21.06. I sent the board an email about this issue earlier, and it deals with one of our favorite topics of board polls. Policy 137 governs board polls, and Section 3, Paragraph G states that "this procedure is intended to provide an avenue for school board guidance in unusually urgent situations on time-sensitive matters that require direction between scheduled board meetings or which arise when the school board is not meeting on a regular basis. Staff shall exercise diligence in anticipating sensitive or time-critical issues and obtain guidance through normal procedures whenever possible." And so, while the particular item that was voted on by a board poll is probably fairly non-controversial, the concern about using a board poll at a time when it could be very easily scheduled becomes, what else could be voted on without public notice? What issues that the community, maybe board members may be interested in, would be voted on or approved, the public has no notice that there could be a vote, that they should address the board, has no opportunity to give public comment, board members don't have the opportunity for public discussion, and things could be pushed through in the dark at night, or let's say, over a weekend? That could be concerning. So, that's why that provision's there. It's important to be abided by, and hope the board and public take that to heart. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. Heather Deputy? Heather Deputy? Okay. Next, we have Catherine Purnell.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Purnell, and I am a senior at Stonewall Jackson High School. My school is an amazing place, and it has some of the best students and teachers in this county. However, our school is about 50% economically disadvantaged, and this means that most of our student population cannot supply their own physical resources like many of the other students in the school and the counties can. However, our school has to provide these needs for our students, and otherwise, we are being placed at a level below other schools in the county. Most of our students cannot afford their own laptops or printers just to complete assignments. This means that they have to use those provided by the school to do their homework. Yet, the tablets that our school provides are of poor quality. They're slow to function, and on average, it takes about 10 minutes just for the laptops to turn on. And furthermore, they don't even work a third of the time. They just don't turn on. And if we had more laptops of better quality just to provide to our student population, we'd be able to provide better work, and we are eliminated at these challenges that other students do not have to face. Stonewall Jackson only has one printer in the library. Very few students have access to any outside of this, and it is consequently almost impossible to print anything in the morning. One printer for 2,000 students to do their daily work. And if you ask any SJ student, they'll tell you that printing is something that they have to plan into their day during class. This means that they are missing valuable instructional time to print their homework. Lastly, many of my classes encourage, or in some cases, require that we purchase study materials. For a large number of students who cannot afford to pay the amount asked for these textbooks, this means that they have to borrow somebody else's, or they do not even get the support. For my AP Comparative Government Class sophomore year, the encouraged study materials cost $70. Many of my classmates went without this text, and therefore did not have the same ability to study as others around the country who are taking the same exams. Affirmative Action declares that those who have been repeatedly put down in the past should get more resources to combat their inequalities. In this school district, other students have the ability to pay for resources such as SAT tutoring, multiple SAT tests, their own laptops and printers that let them do work whenever and wherever they want. The economically disadvantaged populations at my school have been looked over in favor of new technology and nicer facilities at other locations in the county. I am simply asking that my school be looked at, and these resources be allocated to my school to create a more equal chance for a better future for all of the students in this county, not just the ones who can pay for their chance themselves. Thank you.
Cheryl Elsmore?
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Elsmore, and my address is on file. I am here to express how deeply disappointed I am with the loss of Woodbridge High School football coach Gary Wertham, also affectionately known as Coach G. My son Seth Elsmore had the privilege of playing varsity football under Coach G's leadership, 2015 to 2019. Coach G invested in, challenged, guided, and shaped my son as a leader and an athlete. He rewarded my son's hard work his senior year with the role of team captain, and he helped connect my son with numerous college coaches. Seth is now playing Division II football and earning a bachelor's degree much more affordably thanks to the scholarships he received. I got to witness Coach G's leadership in the lives of the football players at Woodbridge. I witnessed his passion and immense investment in time and personal resources for helping young men pursue their dreams of getting to play football in college, and more importantly, the opportunity to pursue higher education through scholarships. Coach G went far above and beyond the requirements of his role on behalf of his players and school community. His passion and work ethic not only received the attention of college coaches across our nation, but it also earned him the national honor of being named an All-American Coach. Coach G and his family opened their home to help build community with the team by hosting meals while watching football film. I witnessed firsthand Coach G's positive influence on these young men when I hosted the coaches and players in my home for meals and film. I saw his care go even further when he would seek help for players who were facing the death of a parent, financial crisis, and homelessness. In addition to football, my son also wrestled, and it meant the world to him that Coach G and his staff would come support him at tournaments. I also witnessed Coach G supporting other programs at Woodbridge like basketball, and arranging for Spirit Buses to take students to away games who couldn't have attended without that. I do not understand the motives behind Jason Eldridge's agenda to clean house, or the so-called leaders who allowed him to do that. Letting Coach Wertham and his staff leave the Woodbridge High School community was a terrible loss for our families, students, athletes, and Prince William County schools. Our students' best interests were not put at the forefront of that decision. The stress and hurt from all of this has taken its toll on these players, and it breaks my heart to hear stories of young men wanting to quit. It also infuriated me to hear players didn't even have access to their film to send to college recruiters during a very critical recruiting period during all of this mess. There was no reason to fix what wasn't broken. I hope that you're serious about providing accountability. This was a foolish, hurtful, and unnecessary loss for our Woodbridge community. Thank you.
Riley Ocasey?
Good evening, Dr. Latif, board members, Dr. Walts. My name is Riley Ocasey, and my address is on file. The Prince William Education Association is grateful for the creation of the Office of the Ombudsman. This office provides a confidential resource for employees, students, parents, and community members, and should always be valued with the highest respect. We have had the opportunity to meet with the ombudsman, and each meeting has ended with mutual respect and understanding for each of our roles. As I read over the report, there was one part that greatly disturbed me, employee visitor concerns, and I quote, "The most prevalent category of employee concerns involved evaluative or supervisor employee relationships. Of the 41 employee visitors, 31 expressed concerns related to evaluative relationships. This equated to 75% of employee visitors. The often most expressed subcategories include respect and treatment, trust and integrity, retaliation or fear of retaliation, and departmental climate." These concerns are not a surprise, as PWEA has not only heard the same concerns for years and years, but has continuously advocated for better treatment of Prince William County school employees. PWEA members call our office and share stories of mistreatment and disrespect. However, many will not pursue the proper channels because of a real and debilitating fear of retaliation. Educators cannot do their job when they are distracted and concerned about how they will be treated. They cannot do their job when they reach out for assistance from central office and are sent callous, unprofessional, and disrespectful responses. They cannot do their job when their supervisors constantly point out the negatives and never the positives. They cannot do their job when there is a lack of support and they do not feel valued. Board members, I urge you to listen closely to the report presented to you this evening, and dig deeper to look at trends and patterns. You will receive, or have received, more information than what is presented to the public. Listen, do something, ask questions. If you are serious about retaining educators, you need to be serious about addressing the concerns. Thank you.
Emmett Fletcher?
My name is Emmett Fletcher. My address is on file. Mr. Chairman, school board members, Dr. Walts, why do parents have to continue to come up here three to four months? Because we won't give up. And I don't have to go through the details. Every one of the board members, they understand what the problem is at Woodbridge, and it appears now that we got problems at Stonewall. And the concern we had, have, and still have, we haven't got any result or any answers yet from what's going on at Woodbridge with Coach G. The parents are still confused. They are upset, and we demand justice. We're going to stay here until you guys make a decision, or the independent We're going to stay here until you guys make a decision or the independent investigation come back. It's not fair. It's just not fair. And we've heard this theme throughout tonight about things at Woodbridge High School, things at Stonewall. And it really hurts my heart to hear the kids from Stonewall indicating the lack of supplies that they have. This doesn't make any sense. One printer that's working? It doesn't add up. It's not right. Now, this board is going to either start doing something, or they're going to get labeled the do-nothing board. Because we want action, and we're going to demand action. You know, justice is supposed to be blind, it's supposed to be balanced. But I don't see it here, Dr. Latif. I don't see it. We all worked together to elect this board to represent all the people of Prince William County, not just a few, but all the people. And now we're in February, going in March. What have we gotten accomplished? But we will not give up. We will not give up. We will come back and come back again. Someone at Woodbridge High School, someone fumming the ball. Now, if this was a pro football game, NFL, we could call New York or either do an instant replay of what happened. But we're the instant replay for what happened at Woodbridge High School. We don't have the video, but somebody knows what's going on, and we will get it right. And we will not stop until we get it right and find out what's going on. It is not fair. Do your job.
Heather Abney.
I wanted to see if Catherine Purnell was still here, but I think she left. She spoke from Stonewall, and she actually, I believe, is going to States for swimming, so I wanted to congratulate her on that. My name is Heather Abney, and I'm the principal of Woodbridge Senior High School. I'm here to speak briefly about the concerns many have expressed about our Director of Student Activities, Mr. Eldridge. On November 12, 2019, I sent a letter to Woodbridge Senior High School football players and their families. The following was included in that letter. Quote, "I have seen the huddle correspondence between Mr. Eldridge and some of our transfer students, as well as the messages to all football players, and I recognize some of the correspondence has been interpreted as disrespectful. Please know that at no time was there any intention on behalf of Mr. Eldridge for those comments to refer to anything more than the subject at hand, which was regarding student transfer requests. However, the huddle correspondence was not productive, and I want to personally apologize for any misunderstanding this may have caused." End quote. This evening, I would like to once again apologize for the comments that were made. I would also like to say that as a principal, I always look at feedback as opportunities to both reflect and grow as a leader. And in this case, I am specifically doing that along with Mr. Eldridge. Dr. Waltz, you've been nothing but supportive since I was hired as a principal back in January of 2016. And I want to thank you and Mr. Mulgrew for trusting me to lead one of the largest high schools in Prince William County. And I will say something that I'm very proud of that's ironic in this case. I'm the first female minority leader at Woodbridge Senior High School, and that's something that I take a lot of pride in, and I want to get this right. As mentioned at a previous school board meeting, the school board has hired an outside law firm to investigate concerns brought forward. I want to personally thank Dr. Latif and the board for initiating this investigation. Once the investigation is complete, I will be working closely with central office to make decisions that will continue to be in the best interest of not only our students, but our entire school community. And before I leave tonight, I want to thank you all for your support. All of you have been extremely supportive. I haven't met the new board members, but Mr. Wilk for oftentimes saying to me, "Keep up the good work, let me know if you need help." Ms. Ralston for saying you're not my board member, but you're here to support me. Mr. Latif, Dr. Latif for commenting on our leadership program, for supporting our leadership program at Woodbridge. For Ms. Jessie for being there at Seussical the Musical. For the student that was one of your former students at Vaughn, who didn't have a dad in the audience because he passed away, but you were there as her former principal. And Dr. Waltz, especially to you for the student that made a prank call a couple years ago, or last year and could have been expelled. You came over to Woodbridge and specifically accepted his apology and gave him a second chance, a student that came from a very challenging background. So I want to thank you for that, and thank you again, all of you, for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Abney. Cozy Bailey.
Before you start that timer, I would appreciate if all members of staff would put down their cell phones and at least pretend that you're paying attention. My name is Cozy Bailey, and my address is on file. Let me give you a preview to something else. The time has come to replace the name Stonewall Jackson with the name of a true American hero in our county here. As Chris Cuomo would say, "Let's get after it." As I said in a recently sent email to every associate supervisor and every member of the school board, "The situation at Woodbridge Senior High School is only the tip of the iceberg of a larger problem with the Prince William County School Division. There is a systemic problem because the leadership has decided to remain silent in the face of racial inequity. You have the power to do that, every one of you. Those of you who are sitting on this desk before me and those sitting at the desk on the side, with one notable exception, are exercising your power. Your power to weigh the need for protest or confrontation of a grievous wrong against the discomfort or inconvenience of speaking up. You have the ability to choose when and where you want to take a stand, but by your silence, you're choosing consent. Consent to maintain the status quo and retain your power instead of pursuing the morally right path and serve this community as you've been hired to do or elected to do. You have determined that you're safe in doing nothing simply because of the positions that you occupy. Now, let's call this situation exactly what it is: racism. It falls into the category of racism exercised explicitly or implicitly based on occupying a position of power and authority for an extended length of time with no desire or intent to change the way things have always been done. It's getting to choose when and where you want to take a stand. It's knowing that you and your humanity, your job, but most importantly, your hold on power are safe. I tell you this evening, this kind of racism is called white privilege. Now, let me ask you a rhetorical question. Why is it that we were told that this investigation was approved or authorized by the school board, but the duly-elected school board member from the Akakuan District wasn't present during the proceeding? You know, as Arsenio Hall used to say, "This makes you go, hmm." One of the favorite tools of those who seek to retain power at any cost is to eliminate possible opposition through seemingly standard and legal means. My hero, Dr. Martin Luther King, was asked continuously why he felt that some who saw justice and equity resorted to rioting. His answer was telling. He said that a riot is the language of the unheard. What you have been experiencing here is a riot of voices because these parents and students at Woodbridge Senior High School have not been heard. But don't be deceived. If you will not yield to the riot of voices, the voices are called for justice. Just like David in the Bible, I have five smooth stones. I've got a stone for faith, obedience, service, prayer, and the gift of the Holy Ghost. And because our quest is righteous, we will use all of them to bring about justice and change. And just like David, Goliath will fall."
Swannell Wiggins.
My name is Swannell Wiggins, and my address is on file. I like to watch The Golden Girls, and I love Sofia. So picture this. Imagine you are all students, and the adults in your school made comments with racial undertones that made you feel unwanted. What if the adults got upset because you truthfully let them know why you felt that way? What if they spewed more hurtful words in retaliation? What if? Now, picture this. You are actually in a position of authority and able to do something about that to protect our students. What if those students that were being addressed were a group of female students? What would you do to protect them? What if those being addressed were a group of immigrant students? What would you do to protect them? What if they were addressing a group of students with diverse religions? What would you do to protect them? What if they were a group of students who were LGBTQ? What would you do to protect them? What if there was an adult who was addressing a group of predominantly African-American and Hispanic-American students? What would you do to protect them? Oh, I know the answer to that: nothing. Now, let's pretend that you are Superintendent and his staff. Would you take ownership for your hiring mistakes and mishandling of a situation that reeks of injustice? Would you continue to ignore a four-month call for action? Would you care that a certain group of parents and students feel that their concerns and requests are seemingly continued to fall on deaf ears? It is time now to come back to reality and protect our children from those who would disregard their feelings and cries for help. It is time to answer our call for action. Thank you.
Richard Jesse.
My name is Richard Jesse. My address is on file. One thing I wanted to say for folks, you know, and I haven't heard it tonight, but a lot of times people get up and say, "Do the right thing." Please don't say that, because the right thing to one person is different for the other person. So, you know, we have our views. But I like to do something. Talking about Woodbridge High School, you know, I really can't figure out what else to say because we've been up here a lot. So I want to do something a little different today. I would like all the board members to take 15 seconds and just say nothing. I think that's about 15 seconds. That's how long it took in reality for when a coach over at Cogan High School, I believe, got in some trouble, and the parents got outraged, and the superintendent did something about it. I think most of you would agree that that's a little uncomfortable. But that's about the same amount of time that these parents that keep coming up here have heard nothing. Okay? That's what it's like. We have heard nothing. You appoint an investigator to investigate that people do not have confidence in because they are associated with the school board, they've worked for the school board, and so forth. They don't have confidence in them. And we stand here, and I tell you, it's time to do something different. Thank you.
Shapak. So let's talk about discipline. We agree that when a Prince William County administrator does something wrong, they should be disciplined. And we, we being the students and the parents at Woodbridge Senior High School, watched Coach Gary Wertham Jr. be disciplined. He got in a disagreement with an adult. He was disciplined and not allowed to come see students play. He was not allowed on school grounds, and we supported the leadership because we were told, "This is what will happen to anyone who offends. It'll be investigated, and you'll be disciplined." Then we watched, sorry, Coach Gary Wertham Jr. is black. Then we watched the athletic director, Jason Eldridge, offend 547 voting adults. So when someone black offends one person, they are disciplined. But when someone white offends 547 voters, all adults, they allowed to come to school every day and collect the paycheck. That's what the students see. That's what the parents see. And what we are asking for, that 547-page petition that was emailed to some of you, some because those 547 voters stood in line on November 5 and elected some of you for the first time and re-elected some of you. We said that our interests are our students, and we ask you to please. In that petition, it highlighted what the parents wanted. We wanted Jason Eldridge to be investigated, and we wanted him to not come to school to create a hostile educational environment for our children. Imagine being molested. We're going to go there. Imagine being molested, being violated, and you have to see your abuser every day. That's what your inaction has caused. It's a hostile education environment. I'll quickly come to close, that the difference between Gary Wertham Jr. and Jason Eldridge's skin color. We will hold you accountable. Not all of you, because we're giving you an opportunity not to renew his contract, but we will hold you accountable because you control personnel matters, Dr. Waltz, and you've done nothing. Now, I can't change the fact that I'm not white, but what Cogan did have to their advantage is that they had a lawyer. So if you want 547, it only takes 1% of us. It only takes one of us, myself, to get an attorney so that then you understand, I know you understand color. I can't help that I'm not white. But if you want me to get an attorney and file a lawsuit against you for a hostile educational environment, consider it done.
My name is Natasha Gillespie. My address is on file. I sit here today, and I hear so much. And I kind of got a clear understanding why a lot of things not happening. I thank you for coming and addressing us, but yet, the reason why nothing has happened because she don't see anything that he's done wrong. We as parents, I sat in the car with three students when the huddle, when he had the conversation on Huddle, and they all took their phones and say, "Look, look what Mr. Eldridge said." But yet, Ms. Abney, you sit here and you say that he didn't mean to say it. He said what he meant, and he meant what he said, and the kids received it the way that he said it. I've been coming, I'm getting upset because I've been coming here, but when you see all the different things about the equity, why are we not valued? Why are we not valued? Why is our concerns is not valued? You are the first minority here, so you should have a better understanding of what the parents have come to you to address to you. I'm only talking to you now because you're sitting here, right?
Ms. Gillespie, you can address the board.
Okay.
Stick to addressing the board.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that. I'll address, and I'll still say what I have to say. The reason why none of this has happened because she don't see any wrong in Mr. Eldridge. That's why he's there. I don't even know how much consideration you all are taking that we keep coming back. We're going to still come back. We're going to keep coming back. But it's not fair. My son had... But because of adults can't get together to take the interest of the children, he don't even want to play anymore. He have not been to any of the morning workouts or anything. He has, you're taking that away. He has an opportunity to be productive and to come back and to give back to the kids that's in the school. But it's been taken away because adults can't get together to try to see what's in the best interest. One saying, he didn't mean to say this, but our kids saying how they received it. It's not fair. It's not fair. I come and look into all of you faces. I see who paying me some attention and I see who's not. I know that he's not because he types and he's on his phone and he's the high school superintendent. He don't even value what we're saying up here. He haven't even addressed us. And it's a shame. You all should feel bad about, about yourself because I feel bad that my son is in this prediction.
How you guys doing? My name is Demetrius Miguel Brown. I'm in the Neapsso Districts. And Ms. Rawson, I'll be addressing you. How are you doing, Ms. Jesse? So one thing I would like to bring up, I have two kids in King Elementary. And my daughter was not doing good in school. And when they broke down the grades to us, you know, A, or excuse me, S+, S-, N. It's pretty disgusting and shameful what satisfactory is considered in my kid's elementary. A 70 is satisfactory. You're a doctor, you're a doctor, pretty sure you're a good student, pretty sure y'all are good students. Pretty sure your mom and daddy would not accept a 70 and call that satisfactory. I don't consider that satisfactory. So I don't know how to make that change, but it needs to be addressed. When first-grade students are being told that it's satisfactory to get a 70 and get an S-, it's a 69, that's terrible and that's shameful. Truly shameful. I know a lot of brothers don't come up here. I know a lot of fathers don't come up in here, speaking about education, but I'm here. And I'll be here again, and I'll be here again until something changes. I apologize for chewing gum, just trying to keep my, you know, nerves. So, also another thing, I know Voice was here talking about pre-K expansion. I know you see me on the Policy Council. We need to define, redefine what poverty is in Prince William County. The median income is $99,000. To get accepted over there is 55. We barely made it and it's made a huge difference. You have a lot of parents who work and work hard, who can give to y'all's tax base, but they can't because they have to pay a ridiculous amount of money in the hundreds to pay for childcare when y'all should be providing it because we're taxpayers. It's expensive to live here. I pay a high property taxes. I own a home, you know, it's real. And y'all should really consider expanding those things and, and acting upon it. I think that's about it. I would like to end with a quote, since it is Black History Month and a lot of Caribbean cats don't, you know, embrace their black side, but there's a gentleman named Pedro Albizu Campos, who was the first Puerto Rican to graduate from Harvard Law School. And he said, and it's on my shirt, but I say it in English because my Spanish isn't that sexy. He said, "The youth have a duty to defend their country with weapons of knowledge." So how about we arm our kids? Thank you.
Donovan Bates?
Hello, hello. Donovan Bates, and I'm speaking on Potomac Middle School. And just from what I've seen here, it seems like I might be here more than once. This is my first time. So I don't know if y'all know, I'm going to speak on a threat assessment. Regulations R 777-1. I received from Associate Superintendent from Middle Schools, Bill Bixby, and recommended they be changed. February 6th, my daughter, along with several other students on every student at Potomac Middle School, was in there with a student who made a threat to shoot up the school and allegedly had a hit list. The parents were not notified by the school at all. And the students came home to tell us, tell the parents of this terrifying news. If it wasn't for my Facebook post that went viral, many other parents would not have known and they would have sent their students to school the next day. Or thought the parents know anything. I received a message from the principal the next day after I reached out to him and had several other people in the email. And he suggested that I should have just, I shouldn't have created that Facebook post and I should have just reached out to him. He didn't even suggest that we should have been contacted immediately or anything like that. So when our kids leave the safety of our homes to go to school, we expect for them to be left in the safety of the school system. We do not deserve to hear from our kids or from the principal on a day that the threat was supposed to be acted out of this incident. These are the things that happened, though. We deserve to know exactly what's going on with all of our children and immediately, especially if it might involve their life. It's your job to do this, but on February 6th, y'all failed. Under the Threat Assessment Procedures in Section 4A, which is titled Identifying and Reporting Threats, there's not one place where it says that a threat should be reported to the parents. This is a big problem. I thought that the school did not follow the procedures this whole time. But now I realize it's the school board that failed and not giving out the right procedures, not thinking it important for us parents to be notified, even in a situation such as a school shooting. So now I want to know, are y'all going to look at the procedures? Are y'all going to change them? And will you have us involved in all aspects of our child's lives, especially their safety? In seeing this as a serious matter, I want to know, how long will it take? How long am I going to have to wait?
Thank you. Okay, folks, that's the end of citizens' time. I'm going to ask the board to take a 10, 10-minute break and reconvene at about 14 minutes, 9:40. Thank you. Thank you. If everyone would grab their seats, we're going to move on to my favorite time of the year, and that's the Finance and Risk Management Security Services, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report by John Wallingford. We call this the CAFER. This is probably the most exciting time of the year. Mr. Wallingford? This item is on for information. Are you presenting anything or you just gave me the document and we can just move on? What are we doing here? Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
So Dr. Latif, for your reading pleasure.
Yes.
So tonight, Dr. Latif, members of the board and Dr. Walz. Tonight, we have some staff members from Cherry Becker Holland, our external audit firm who does our appropriated fund audits. Laura Beckler and Greg Miller. They will be presenting the CAFER and doing some communications, providing you with some communications. Before we proceed, however, I would like to introduce Lisa Thorne, Renee Gappason, and Taft Kelly. Lisa Thorne is our finance director. She and her staff are responsible for this document that you've been provided. They put a lot of effort. It's a very complex thing to do, and I'd like to thank them all. Mr. Miller, you're on.
On behalf of Cherry Becker, appreciate you guys having us here. We do value y'all entrusting us as your external auditors. I will agree, this is a very exciting topic for this evening. There's a presentation in front of you. If you remember, last year it was probably 15 pages. I tried to adhere to the five-page limit this year, but I did get to a six, so you guys could have a picture of me to take home. On our first slide, Engagement Services. Just a clicker. So this is, these are the services that we were engaged to perform, the first being a financial statement audit. So that covers the financial statements within your CAFER. In here are also the Student Activity Funds and Spark Foundation. Both of those are audited by other auditors. We do not audit those. They are included in your financial statements, and we refer to those auditors for their opinion on those financial statements. With any financial statement audit, there's also a compliance audit standpoint, both under the government auditing standards and the Audit of Public Accounts of the Commonwealth who issues specific compliance requirements that we have to test every year. And then based upon your funding with federal funding, there are federal compliance requirements that we have to test in accordance with the Uniform Grant Guidance. As part of the APA compliance specifications, there's an examination that we have to perform every year on the census data that's provided by Prince William Schools to the Virginia Retirement System. And then there's an agreed-upon procedures over the Prince William County Schools dispersment process, and those procedures are agreed between the county and the school board. Too far. This doesn't go back. So on Slide 3, our Engagement Services. So this is your CAFER. This is written by management under y'all's supervision, so this is your document. So I would read it, peruse through it, have an understanding of what's in there. It's a little bit of light fun reading. If you can't fall asleep one evening, it's there. But this is your document, so you should be aware of what's in here. And reports your finance position as the school board overall. So within the document, there's multiple different sections. The first being the introductory section, then a financial section, and a statistical section. Our opinion is on the financial statements, which is in the financial section. And we did issue an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion, so that is what you're looking for in your financial statements from your financial statement auditor, is an unmodified opinion. There's also statistical or supplementary information here, so this is additional information to supplement what's in the financial statements. We have an in relation opinion to that, so the information that's in there in relation to the financial statements taken as a whole was representative of the financial statements. So that's a clean opinion in relation to on that. The introductory section, statistical section, and the required supplementary information is used in there for additional analysis of the financial statements. We do not audit or, or issue any assurance over those areas of the financial statements, but they help to give you historical trends, 10-year trend tables on where net position is or different various aspects, as well as demographics within the district. From an examination standpoint, we did issue our examination back in the August timeframe. That was an unmodified opinion as well, so that's a clean opinion on the census data provided to the VRS. From the agreed-upon procedure standpoint that I mentioned earlier, we're still currently working through that and anticipate issuing that in the coming months, the AUP procedures. From a compliance reporting standpoint, as I mentioned, the government auditing standards are the first level, so we review internal controls over financial reporting, not for the purposes of expressing an opinion on the operating effectiveness of controls, but to gain an understanding for how the financial statements are developed. So if you are familiar with the SEC or PCOB environment, those auditors would issue an opinion on the effectiveness of controls. We do review the controls, we do test controls, but we do not issue an opinion on the effectiveness of those internal controls. During our testing, if anything were to come to our, to our knowledge of any deficiencies in internal control that would be significant enough, we would bring those to your attention. Our report for government auditing did have one material weakness in that, and that was relating to inventory during the year. For the Audit of Public Accounts, the APA specifications, there's certain compliance requirements that we have to test for laws within the Commonwealth. And we had one instance or one area that we have to test that we had compliance filings over, and that was for conflict of interest filings. From Uniform Grant Guidance, that's over your federal funding, we test the federal compliance with the Uniform Grant Guidance, as well as the internal controls over those compliance requirements. And we had no reportable material weaknesses or non-compliance over federal grants. For the required communications, Laura Beckler's going to kind of go through those to go over our required communications.
So we're required to communicate with you all. Accounting policies that have changed during the year, and there have been none that are reported, that would be significant to our audit. For management judgment and accounting estimates, we do note that there are several estimates that are within the financial reporting. And we do test the underlying data for these assumptions, but these assumptions are estimates, including the allowance for accounts receivable, the inventory reserve, the OPEB, the other post-employment benefit and pension assumptions as well. We did note, we did propose one on, a statement that was noted during our audit for about $6,000 in the school-age childcare fund. And management had determined that it was immaterial to them and decided not to post that entry, and that was due to cutoff issues for accounts payable. And we determined that that was immaterial overall to the financial statements, and thus we moved forward. We did not have any disagreements with management or any difficulties encountered in performing our audit this year. If management, if we were to become aware that management was consulting with other accountants, we would inform you as the board of those conversations. And we do report that there were no other accountants consulted during the year. We did receive a management rep, management representation letter dated the date of the audit report. And we have received all information that we believe is necessary from Lisa and her team. We want to thank them for providing all information timely and appreciate all of their efforts. Each year, we do an independence review for our firm, and we believe that we are independent with Prince William County Schools.
So the last bullet for future accounting reporting changes, these are things that are, were not included in this year's financial statements, but there will be changes to next year's CAFER and future year's CAFERS. So I want to make you aware of those because some of those will be effective for the current fiscal year, fiscal year '20's CAFER. So the first one would be GASB 84, so that's over fiduciary activities. That kind of changes the layout, geography of where in the financial statements. Certain activity will be landings, so the biggest impact from the school board's perspective will be the Student Activity Funds. Historically, those have been included as an agency fund. The concept of an agency fund is changing to a custodial fund, but within the definitions of GASB 84, your, your Student Activity Funds will most likely became a governmental-type fund and were reported in the CAFER on a full, cruel basis. So that's a big change from historical norms. The second one is new GASB pronouncement over leases. That'll be effective for fiscal year '21. For those of you that may be in the corporate environment, there's a similar pronouncement out there over leases. There currently, we have two types of leases. You have a capital lease or you have an operating lease. The concept of an operating lease is going away, and everything will be a capital lease in essence going forward. This is going to take a significant amount of man-hours for staff to go through and analyze all lease documents to make sure that all the information necessary to record those journal entries for the first time in fiscal year '21 are accurate and complete. So with that, that's our required communications. I appreciate your time and thanks for having us.
Well, I can't thank you, Mr. Miller and Ms. Beckler, enough. I serve on the Joint Audit Committee as the board's representative with the county, and your firm, Cherry Becker, has done an excellent job in ensuring to the public that we are following and complying with all the laws and the internal audit controls and external audit controls that we are supposedly, supposed to be doing. So I can't thank you for your work. And Mr. Wallingford and your team for this outstanding, comprehensive financial, annual financial report. And, and so thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions for these folks, these fine folks, our CAFER folks? Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Wallingford. Excellent. Moving on, moving on. How do you top that? Superintendent's time. Dr. Walz.
Well, I'll try. Thank you, Chairman Latif, members of the board. Keith Emon, Deputy Superintendent. Denise Hebner, Associate Superintendent for Special Ed and Student Services. And Rebecca Slater, Director of Student Services, recently represented our school division at the National School Board's Association Equity Symposium held in Washington, DC. And I think there's going to be, there they are. Their attendance is a small part of the work we are doing division-wide on equity. Their attendance is a small part of the work we are doing division-wide on equity. This year, the Superintendent's Advisory Council on Equity began meeting, and I look forward to hearing more about their recommendations. The Virginia Department of Education recently released data on state performance on advanced placement exams in 2019. Prince William County Public Schools had a higher percentage of graduates earning qualifying scores on one or more advanced exams than the nation, Virginia, and even Massachusetts, the highest-ranked state. Congratulations to Jerome Hurruska, technology educator from Stonewall Jackson High School, and Jenna Connor Harris, gifted education teacher from Lakewood Middle School, who have been named Teachers of the Year by the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 7916 located in Okeechob. They were recognized earlier this month for their outstanding commitment to teach Americanism, flag etiquette, and inspire patriotism within our students. Kudos to Annabelle Keir, 7th grader at Ronald Wilson Reagan Middle School, whose article, "The Life and Times of a Sixth Grade Student," was the cover story for the February 2020 edition of Association for Middle Level Education Magazine. The article echoes Annabelle's encouraging words to 5th grade students who attended the Ronald Reagan Middle School Orientation Session over the summer. February is the American Heart Association Heart Month. Cameron Barb, a kindergarten student at Kyle Wilson Elementary, was born with a congenital heart defect. In recognition of February's Heart Health Month, he shared his story with fellow students in Ms. Sumter's class. Cameron's mother, Jessica Barb, twin sister Stella, and older sister Kennedy helped with the presentation to his class. Cameron's mom hopes that sharing Cameron's story will help students understand the importance of fundraising for charities such as American Heart Association. In the past three years, Kyle Wilson Elementary has raised over $20,000 for the American Heart Association through their Jump Rope for Heart Donation Drive. The AHA provides doctors with knowledge and resources to help children like Cameron. PWCS will hold a parent summit for parents of high school and 8th grade students at 8:00 a.m. on Saturday, March 14th, at Potomac High School. Sessions will focus on transitioning to high school and college, getting the most out of high school, as well as college planning, financial aid, workforce opportunities, trade and technical programs, and much more. Parents can choose from over 25 different sessions. Go to www.pwcs.edu for more information. Governor Northam announced yesterday that Prince William County Public Schools has been awarded a $125,000 grant to advance computer science education in our schools. The school division plans to use the grant funding to increase the awareness of the importance of computer science knowledge and skills in a variety of careers, provide high-quality professional development opportunities for teachers, and increase the number and variety of courses offered to PWCS students. PWCS is one of only seven school divisions in the entire state of Virginia who has awarded this grant. Yesterday, the county executive presented his proposed fiscal 2021 budget to the Board of County Supervisors. His presentation showed a budget that was $15.3 million less than the budget proposal I provided to the school board during our last meeting. It is important to understand the scale of this potential gap and the reductions that would be necessary if this gap remains when finalized. For example, if this amount was unchanged, it would be approximately equivalent to the cost-of-living increase provided for staff, or it would require multiple reductions, such as economically disadvantaged funding, plus removing additional pre-K classrooms, combined with cuts to digital equity, special education teaching assistance, and new social workers. However, I am optimistic and pleased by the actions of the Board of County Supervisors, who voted to advertise a tax rate that, if realized, would nearly fund our school budget. I am also pleased to see the potential for additional support from the General Assembly. I believe that our community will continue to advocate for the needs of our children, as our teachers and students deserve a world-class education and world-class funding. We will provide the school board with a detailed update on the financial picture at next week's work session. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Walz. Next, we'll move on to 2101, the revision of, it's on for information, our first reading with Ms. Heebner.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, members of the school board, Dr. Walz. I'm bringing forward five policies this evening that have been revised, and as you've heard previously, I do love questions, so there will be time after I present to ask any questions about the policies. These policies were updated to ensure that our practices and language are aligned with the Virginia Code and current guidance from the Virginia Department of Education, as outlined in the January 2019 model guidance document that provides best practices and discipline and policies for school divisions. Policy 681, Non-Traditional Education Programs. This policy was updated to reflect the title of the responsible associate, and added language that highlights the division's work to provide intervention and behavior support strategies as part of our non-traditional education programs. Policy 743, Student Discipline. This policy was updated to include the number and the name of all of the regulations that outline implementation of this policy. Previously, only Regulation 745-1 was listed in the actual policy. The policy was also updated to reflect the title of the responsible associate. Policy 744, Short-Term Suspension of Students. This policy was updated to reflect new guidance from Virginia Code to divisions regarding the use of short-term suspension for our pre-K through 3rd grade students. The new policy reflects that suspension of pre-K through 3rd grade students is limited to three days, except where aggravating circumstances exist. Suspension beyond three days is only permissible with permission from the superintendent's designee in situations that include physical harm, credible threat, or significant safety concerns. Additionally, the title of the responsible associate and the date for review were updated. Policy 745, Long-Term Suspension or Expulsion of Students, Re-admission and Exclusion and Admission. This policy was updated to include criteria that includes the following language. Students may be excluded from attending Princeton County Public Schools if they have been expelled or suspended for more than 30 days from another public or private school upon finding by OSMAP that the student presents a danger to other students or staff of the school division. This policy was also updated to reflect the title of the responsible associate. And Policy 747, Office of Student Management and Alternative Programs. The policy was updated to include the use of the wording "alternative education opportunities", as well as to reflect the title of the responsible associate. Ta-da.
Questions, Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Ms. Heebner. Excuse me. Could the board get some data on, like, our suspension rates for the K through 3 students when we're making a policy decision? I'd just like to get some background data on that, as well as how many students transfer in to our division that would be, fall under that policy for having had a suspension or expulsion prior to coming here? I think that'd be very helpful, because, I mean, I've, through the course of time, I've heard students, families moving from outside counties, and the student has gotten in trouble, and it's not for a violent offense or something of that nature, but then now they have a waiting period or are immediately assigned to independents. And it's sort of like getting out of one jail and getting into another jail, even though you've done your time. So I'm just curious to see what, how many people that would actually affect, and what, if possible, if we knew, you know, the extent, like, what categories of offenses they would fall under, because I know we don't know the exact instances due to student privacy concerns, but maybe the rate of XYZ to XYZ, some further data for the board.
Sure, I could do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Just like anything else, this is the first reading. You have the next couple of weeks to please take a look and send any questions or concerns you have to Ms. Heebner regarding any of these changes to our policies. Moving on to 2102, Quarterly Report to the School Board of the Ombudsman. Ms. Sarah Espinosa.
Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Latif, members of the school board, Dr. Walz. As you know, the school board created the Office of the Ombudsman to be a place where any employee, parent, student, or member of the community may seek confidential, impartial, informal, and independent assistance in resolving division-related concerns and issues. As outlined in Policy 180 and the operational guidelines adopted by the board, I categorize the concerns of the visitors seeking assistance at the Office of the Ombudsman, utilizing the uniform reporting categories and subcategories suggested by the International Ombudsman Association. Tonight, you have before you the first quarterly report from the Office of the Ombudsman. I will note that that first quarterly report is longer than a quarter. It's actually the first five months of the Office of the Ombudsman's existence, from August 5th to December 31st. During that period, 62 visitors accessed the Office of the Ombudsman. Of those visitors, 71% were employees, and 21, 29% were parents and community members. I'll briefly highlight the most prevalent issue for employee visitors, for parent and community members, and the two patterns of concerns at specific locations that are noted in the report. For employee visitors, 75% of those who visited expressed concerns related to the evaluative relationship. That's the relationship between supervisor and supervisee. The subcategories that were most prevalent within that category had to do with respect and treatment, trust and integrity, fear of retaliation, and workplace climate. Of the parent visitors, 94% expressed concerns related to service or administrative issues. And the most frequent subcategories associated with this category of concern were behavior of service providers, responsiveness, timeliness, and issues related to athletics. There were two patterns of concerns noted within this quarterly report as well at two particular locations. Concern one involves an office where employee visitors express concerns involving a work climate characterized by perceived disrespectful and unfair treatment by supervisory personnel toward employees, and a fear of retaliation. Concern two involved parents and community members raising issues related to a high school athletics program and subsequent perceived lack of meaningful response or engagement. Additionally, within the report, you have a listing of the outreach and education efforts that I've undertaken, along with Rosa Maria Manzinas, my assistant in the Office of the Ombudsman, during this five-month period. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay. Excellent, Ms. Espinosa. We really appreciate it, and thank you for the great work you're doing, and we're excited about the effort of the new office and what you've been able to accomplish so far. And please let us know how we can be helpful with more resources and those things. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next, 2103, which will be the assignment of the administrative oversight of the clerk and deputy clerk to board designee. This item is on for action. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Princeton County School Board assign administrative oversight of the Office of the Clerk and Deputy Clerk, clerk, excuse me, to a school board member designated by the school board, and further the Division Council prepare related revisions to Policy 123, duties of the clerk and deputy clerk, and Policy 161, Division Council and Division Council's Contract of Employment for further action by the school board.
Do I have a second? Ms. Ralston, seconds. Any discussion? Do we have any, any discussion, any motions? Any amendments? Anybody want to clean up language? Good.
I mean, we have to designate them. The only, the only, yes, I have discussion. So, okay. All right, all right. Let's go.
Okay. No discussion. Please vote.
The vote is six yes, one no, wall, one abstention. Latif, motion passed.
Moving on next to the further study of student start times. Excellent. Who is this, who's doing this for us? Oh, this is me. Okay. Outstanding. So this is why I'm very thrilled about this. So I will make the motion that the Prince William County School Board direct the superintendent to study possible changes to student start times to include benchmarking, surveys, and further research, as suggested by the student representative to the school board, and supported by preliminary staff research. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman? I second.
Ms. Lisa Zargarpur, the Coles District, seconds. Any discussion? Any, you want to discuss?
Yeah, I just have a question.
Yeah, yeah, Ms. Williams.
So my question is, is this, isn't it going to morph into like an outside study? Is it that we're going to spend $250,000 on?
Dr. Walz, can you answer that, since we're directing?
It may possible, possibly involve some outside involvement. For example, there are people in the medical community, there may be someone that we want to consider as an expert to talk about the various zarkadian rhythms and different things like that, that I've certainly read about, but don't pretend to be an expert. I know when Fairfax went through their process, that's something that they did. They also had a medical expert speak at a couple of the public meetings about it. And then I think it would also behoove us to consult with a district or two like Fairfax, where we may need to pay a little bit of consulting fees to find out what they went through. It took them several years. Certainly, you can't do this on a dime, but I'm hoping that maybe as a result of them having gone through it, it might compact our timeline and not take quite as long.
Okay. Thank you, because I was just going to suggest that we, this, I remember bringing this up several years ago. Of course, it was a different board and a different time, so I was hoping that we'd be able to take advantage of some of the resources from the divisions that have already started this. So I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Ms. Jessie.
I agree with that. I was wondering also about the impact on the bus schedule, because, you know, our bus schedule is dependent on, so the impact, that's going to be the cost that's going to be involved in that. Also, the communication with parents and get parent input, because although they're high schoolers, parents still consider you guys to be our babies, and we're concerned when your schedule change and the impact on the household. So, because there are many students, when I was at, a principal at Vaughn, there were kids who were in charge of taking care of the kids in the morning. They had younger students in the home, and the older student was there to take care of children. So it's a lot of things to think about, but I'm just pleased to see that a student representative on the board presented an idea, and that we're really looking at that idea. So thank you, Dr. Latif.
Thank you all. I'd like to echo what Ms. Williams said. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also want to echo the idea that I am glad that we are listening to our students on this. I appreciate the student leadership of our student member in bringing this forward. I think it's important that we listen to the youth, who are the recipients of our policy and our start times, and as, you know, life is complicated, and we have a lot of pressures on our students these days, more so than I think, you know, in my generation or in past generations. They have a lot on their plates, and these mental health days that students are asking for, I know a lot of that has to do with just being, you know, flat-out tired, just exhausted, because of their heavy schedules and their early mornings and their late nights with all their activities. So, you know, part of having excellent students is having worn-out and tired students. So I appreciate the leadership on this. I am in support of this motion to study this, and I'd like to see it go forward.
I don't have much to add to that, other than echoing what Ms. Wall and Ms. Williams said, and thank you, Ms. Jessie. And Mr. Kim, thank you for the students for bringing this forward. I think there's a rich amount- I think there's a rich amount of information already in existence on this. California has mandated this, so I don't think it'll cost us a whole lot to look at this. One of the things that, you know, I was sort of interested in trying to get it done if we were going to do it for next school year, but I think to Ms. Jesse's point, there are a number of things we have to address, whether it's cost and communicating to the public what our plan is, and it would have not been enough time. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Walts, for agreeing to take a look at this, and we really appreciate it, and we look forward to hearing your report. You have a date? No, I'm just, I'm just joking. We're moving on to, oh, do we have to vote? Yes, oh, vote, please vote, sorry.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the 2105, the three-story elementary prototype design. Mr. Al Chiroki. Wow, looks like Arlington.
Good evening, Dr. Latif, members of the Board, Dr. Walts. As you're aware, on the agenda, there, we are asking for your approval of the newest three-story prototype that we plan or intend to use in the near future for the Rosemont-Louis School, and then obviously consider it for some other schools where land may be very limited, or the sites may require us to build up versus out, such as the Potomac Shores Elementary School, the Aquaquan Replacement, as well as the Woodbridge Area School are all sites that a school of this prototype could be considered. So, you've seen the presentation, and I'm happy, as well as Mr. John Winley, our Director of Facility Services, and Mr. John Mills, our Construction Supervisor, we're all here to answer any further questions or provide clarification for you.
Ms. Lily Jess.
I love the design. I, I was just very pleased to see the collaborative spaces that you provided, the fact that you were thoughtful and put in the media center on the second floor so you could have access at the top and at the bottom. The stairway, instead of the story room concept, you used a stairway as, it has dual purposes. And I think you and I discussed that we saw this in Fairfax County when they refurbished an old building and how they use their space there. But I, it, I'm just pleased that we are beginning to realize that, especially on the eastern end of the county, we just don't have the land, and we really need to think of a different way, a more vertical approach. And, you know, I know people here have heard me preach this for years and years, but I am pleased to see this. Thank you very, very much. You're doing good for a first-year person, first coming in here, man.
Ms. Williams.
I like what you're doing.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I asked for this to be pulled off the consent agenda, which, for a few things. One, as a board member, I would like to see more options before we get presented, one, like when we do other, undertake under major decisions like this. I don't have any negative thing to say about this prototype. I just wanted to try to set a new precedent, because we are hearing, excuse me, from the community about things that they want to see, and I think that it would be a good idea for the Board to be able to have some options when we make a decision. I, of course, I'm a huge fan of the learning spaces and the media center and all of these things, because I think they're integral, and it's stuff that I've been asking for. So, I just wanted to, A, thank you for this design, because it's awesome and it's fabulous, and I think for the space that it's on, it's really forward-thinking for this county. I am just going to stick to my usual stubborn thorn in the side, sorry, Dr. Walts, but I can't help it, it's who I am. I'm always in search of, for the most progressive design that we can possibly get, and I definitely think that this is a step forward, maybe even two or three steps forward for this county as, as far as designs are concerned. I'm really excited by it. I know that there's a lot of work involved. I also know that there's cost involved when we change designs and prototypes, and I want to also speak to that so the public is aware. It's not just as simple as we hire an architect and they just give us a drawing and it's free and they're just, we're excited about it. I know that there's more to it, but I just wanted to take the opportunity to speak on that, because we have a new board, and I think it's important when more people are paying attention that we talk about these things publicly and, and provide a little background information for our new board members. But this is very exciting to have a new prototype, and I really love what I see in it, and I didn't mean to sway the conversation, but I think sometimes, I was recently reminded, you get used to what you know, and when you have new people around, it's good to kind of take a step back and look at it from a fresh lens. So, thank you, Ms. Chiroki, for all the work that you've done in moving us forward. I appreciate that.
Zargarpour.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I noticed that this includes a mulched play area, and in the interest of equity, I would like to see our newer schools designed with, not mulched, but a different play surface to accommodate students with special needs. I know at my own school, we had students who just were even temporarily in wheelchairs or, you know, little walkers and things. They couldn't play on mulch. So if we can be looking maybe more at how to create play spaces that are accommodating to more different, differently-abled people and the things that they may need. And then the other thing that I was curious about, just, I'll go ahead and throw the loop in here. We keep talking about adding preschool to our schools, to our, to our programming, and I'd like to see our future buildings, whether they're elementary, middle, or high, include a space for preschool, because that way, then we're thinking about it. Because right now, we know we don't have a lot of spaces, so those were just by two, two-cent things. I'm sure they weren't two cents, they were lots, but...
Does this include pre-K space or no?
It, it does not currently.
Okay. Mr. Wilk.
Kind of going along the lines of what Ms. Williams was saying, do we have an idea of, like, have we hit the point of estimated cost of this model versus like the John Jenkins model and stuff like that before, like, we are presented and make votes and stuff like that? Because I've noticed one thing that's now circulating on our lovely social media is before this previous board sat in 2014, the other board voted on what is the Potomac Shores three-story model, and people are talking about the absorbent cost and changes of that building now versus what was the Potomac Middle or Gainesville Middle building model. So, just having those numbers and those facts would be helpful, just kind of seeing how the previous, I know we're talking about different scenarios and apples and oranges, and we're looking at space, you know, different scenarios and trying to have space in a more condensed area and stuff like that, but I would just be curious to see how many students are housed in this building versus like a Jenkins Elementary, and then what we'd be looking at with cost. I know, obviously, with inflation and changes of different things like that, but just the building itself and stuff like that would be helpful.
I, I think our staff would be, be very helpful to provide you with a comparison between Jenkins Elementary, our most recent elementary school, as well as this school, and to be able to do a chart that just compares populations, square footages, estimated budget costs. Obviously, as time goes by, costs go up, just with the market that it is, but I think we can provide you something that would answer just that for you.
Thank you. Ms. Wall.
Um, I, based on some of, you know, the public citizen comment that we've been getting over the recent months, I would be interested to know with this new prototype, what kinds of environmental, environmentally friendly or net-zero type aspects of the school are available. I think that would be a good move to show that we have been responsive to, you know, citizen requests. And I'm sure with a new school like this, there are some things. Is that something that we have information on or that we could get information?
We can, and we could actually include that with the chart that does the comparison. Jenkins Elementary was designed to be a LEED-certified building, and this building as well is falling under the LEED requirements, and we could talk, on the chart, we can show what is being designed into it and what sustainable strategies are be, are incorporated in our schools. Obviously, this project was awarded for design back in the late spring, so it, you know, if, as we embark on considering further sustainable strategies in the future, I think that we'll be able to continue. This project's kind of out of the gate, and it's expected to open in 2022. So it's one of those where this fall, we'll have to get this out on the market, but I think as we start looking forward, we can do a comparison so that you'll be most informed.
Dr. Walts.
I, I think that you made a really good point, Mr. Chiroki, but I think that is something that definitely would be good to have the board weigh in on, because if you are in fact serious about moving in that direction, there are associated costs, but it would certainly be good to know, not tonight, but get a consensus and a vote from the board if that is the direction the Board would like the staff to proceed. A second thing that we can do is we can go back to our design team, and we can at least take a look at the possibility of putting one or two pre-K classes in that building and see, see what they come back with.
Can we take care of mulch?
Well, that's, that's a given, yes. We'll make sure that we have one area that has a different alternative, yes.
Ms. Williams, briefly.
So just really short, Mr. Chiroki, you brought up a really good point, and that is, I think it would be helpful for the public and for the Board if we have a reminder timeline when we approach building design or if it's construction-related, because I think a lot of us, sometimes we forget that there is a timeline that has to be adhered to and how long a particular process may be, and especially members of the public. I have a little background in facilities, I'm, that, one of the questions that always comes to my mind, I know when it's presented to us, it, we're, we need to make a decision at that point, usually, but I, I'm not so sure that everyone who would watch, or especially for our newer members, would understand the length of the process and why we need to do things at, at the time that we do. So if maybe a little summary could be attached that says, you know, we're at this stage and it's critical, or the importance of approving something at this juncture, what it may or may not affect, would be helpful for educational purposes as well.
Yeah. Yeah, again, the, the purpose of this policy is for you as a board to see when there's a new prototype, to be able to give us some feedback that this is the direction that you want us to head in so that we can continue forward without expending more dollars. So, what you're providing tonight is exactly what our staff needs.
So, you're telling me that if we wanted to switch it to, say, solar and geothermal, it's too late?
From a timeline perspective, in order to open the school, based upon our CIP of 2022, I would not recommend moving in that direction for this specific project. Now, there are projects that are in the out-years. If, if you as a board decide, based upon the analysis, you know, with the study that's in the budget, I feel pretty confident that we're going to be able to come back to you, show you our existing prototypes for elementary, middle, and high school, show you what it would take with something that you, you know is real. We have real prices where we've put them on the street, show you what it would take to get to, let's say, net zero, and then look at some of our existing schools in our CIP, and then be able to determine what it would take to retrofit those schools, and then we could scale that out to the portfolio of the 90-plus facilities that we have, to be able to give you that information so that you can see that. Would not recommend it for this project, but I think for the out, out schools, it's something you could consider. I, I would be remiss in saying, there will be costs associated. It's not cheaper on the front end. Anytime you build in sustainability, you pay for those technologies, but there is a return on investment with many of them. But we'd want you to see, given the investment and the return on investment, the length of time that it takes, which technologies would you support or not support? In doing so, knowing that you have to find that balance between our renewals and our new schools.
Ms. Jackson.
Mr. Chiroki, thank you so much for meeting with me and talking about this park, and I appreciate your collaboration with the Parks Department to work on the fields and improvement of the park. I just want to echo Ms. Zargarpour's statement about the adaptive playground. As a special educator, I'd be remiss at the opportunity to advocate for that, and mulch is a, not an equity thing, because it's hard to get the wheelchairs over and maybe like a sensory thing. And lastly, I'd like to also add that I really appreciate how the Board is, like, I agree with them about listening to environmental initiatives. As my allergies are kicking in due to the early spring, I feel like we could take a, in the future, we could take a forefront on the fourth, you know, leading philosophy and dealing with environmental problems. Did that make any sense?
Ms. Wall.
Oh, I also just quickly wanted to commend the great small group learning areas and other spaces and the stairwell and all of those project-based space, collaboration spaces and the maker spaces that are in this school. I really like that. I think that's the direction that educational instruction is moving, so I like that the building is reflecting the way that we're rethinking the delivery of educational services.
So, Ms. Zargarpour.
Yeah, just really quickly, you said this would be a LEED-certified building, right?
We're applying and designing it to be.
Okay.
Ultimately, you have to achieve that and be awarded that at the end of the project.
So, my understanding is a LEED certification costs money every single year, because you have to have someone come and do an audit. Do, do we currently, that was my understanding.
There are varying degrees. You, there is initial cost when you apply through the Green Building Council. Once your school achieves LEED, that is a static award. If you choose as, as an owner to have the Green Building Council or someone come back and reevaluate your building annually to, to go further, you can do that. We have not prescribed to that here in Prince William, and most school divisions are not consistent in doing such as well. There is cost associated with that, but that is something you can do.
All right, thanks.
So just, Ms. Jesse.
I guess my question is, with all the, the discussion items here, is this is an action item? So, having listened to the, the questions and the recommendations for additions, can we, is it possible for us to vote on this tonight? Does this need to come back? I think that's my question. I guess only you and Dr. Walts can answer that.
For our perspective, if you're in support of the concept of the design, that is what the policy asks for you to approve. It's not asking you to approve the specifics, because the full project has not, has not been designed. We're in the schematic stage. So, if you like what you see, we can always fine-tune it from many of the suggestions and things you've asked us to investigate, but we would say that we've heard enough tonight for, to receive approval from you.
So, so to be clear, to summarize what everyone kind of said, and superintendent recognized, adaptive playground is something you're going to look into, pre-K classrooms is something you're going to look into. Please reiterate so that, I know Ms. Jackson said it, but I want you to, I want to hear it loud. This site for Rosemont-Louis will still remain and still have a park as part of it. Is that correct?
That is correct. This is a shared site use, and one-third of the property will remain, the existing part that it is today, and as you see in the presentation, there are several improvements that we're making, not only to our portion of the property, but to the parks.
Is that park open right now?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Next would be the, so one thing I'd ask, and I don't think you need the $25,000 study to look at, but if this is a prototype we like moving forward, I understand you can't do, sort of give us an idea of making this like a discovery-type school on this, you know, spot for Rosemont, but can you give us an idea of what this would cost to make it net zero if we choose to continue this prototype? I mean, you should have at least some type of estimate.
It, that's a tough question to answer, because every site and every project is different when you're looking at achieving LEED certification or even net zero. This design would need, would, would require additional enhancements to make it net zero, but depending upon the amount of acreage, the position of your school, the ability to put solar arrays on the roof, how much square footage, or do you have the ability to put geothermal into the building and design? It can vary. So I think part of that study is we can use the existing prototypes, and we can provide that information to you, but I just couldn't give you a flat rate that it's 5% more or it's 10% more than the existing, because every project is different. There are some sites that I believe that we would not be able to achieve net zero currently within our portfolio. We would have to look at buying...
When you talk about retrofitting.
With retrofitting.
You're retrofitting, but moving forward, though, it's easier to come up with an estimate of what it would cause.
If you, once you have your site and you know the positioning of the building and what you're afforded. Yes, sir.
All right. So we are voting to be clear. Do we have, do we have a motion on this? I don't think we did the motion yet, because this is a recommended action.
Do we need a motion?
I do need a mo, right? It's on for action.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the prototype design for the proposed Rosemont-Louis Elementary School set to open in 2022, as shown in the current CIP.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Ms. Wall? I'll give it to her. And Ms. Wall, seconds, and do we have any discussion, further discussion? Please vote.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Moving on to, thank you, Mr. Chiroki. Truly appreciate that. Next, moving on to 2106, confirmation of board poll, February 7th. I need, there's a, it's on for action, I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board confirm the board poll conducted on February 7th, 2020, specifically modifying the approved 2019-20 school calendar to make the March 3rd, 2020 presidential primary a student holiday and a virtual workday for Prince William County Schools employees, with the exception of essential personnel. SAC, SAC before and after services will still be provided on March 3rd.
Do I have a second? Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ralston. Mr. Kim, would you like to third the resolution?
I would like to third that.
Excellent, we have a third. Any discussion? Ms. Williams.
I just would like to thank the superintendent and their staff for informing the board that we did have available time. I know we heard earlier that some concerns about the board just polling, just to be polling, and changing calendars and such, but I believe the idea originated because we have had no snow, so we haven't really used our snow days. And I also appreciate the staff taking the time out to ensure that we would have SAC services before and after school services because it is such short notice. I know that there's a lot of coordination involved, and we can't just demand them to show up and open school sites just because we're making it a holiday. So I really appreciate the time and the effort and the energy, and I also wanted to thank Alphabet for working with the school system to be able to be open that day and provide the services needed because it's not just show up at your regular school. There's a lot more to it, and they will be providing meal service for our students that day. And as a parent who uses SAC and has used SAC forever now it seems, I really appreciate that, and I'm sure that our other working parents do as well. So, thank you.
Please vote.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
We will move on to board matters, and I think we'll start with Ms. Lisa Zagapor.
Good evening. Last week, last time, I wanted to do this and I totally forgot, and so I have to do this first. The staff, thank you for answering my questions. I email a lot of them with a lot of questions, and they've been very patient, and I am very grateful that you haven't already like gone insane with them, and I'm sure there will be many more, and I will still continue to be grateful for all of the answers you've provided me. I had a chance to go see the, the Prince William County District 9 choir, district choir. They had the middle school and high school groups. It was an amazing performance, gave me chills. They just, they, all the groups sounded amazing, especially when I closed my eyes during the middle school performance, they sounded like high schoolers. Closed my eyes during the high school performance, they sounded like college kids. It was beautiful. So I'm grateful for that opportunity and all of the kids who participated. You did an amazing job. I also had a chance to go to the Little Union Baptist Church with the town of Dumfries, did a Black History Month program last weekend, and we, we saw the Grand Park Choir and some dancers, and they were amazing, and I was grateful that got to hear them as well. I've met with many constituents and stakeholders here in Prince William County. I have heard a lot about the budget. It's all important, that's the thing. Everything everyone brings up is important. So my, my professional recommendation is you tell us what you want, but we also need to make sure that our Board of County Supervisors and our representatives in Richmond know that you would like these things for us in Prince William County as well. Believe Adele is going to address this, but we're going to have a, sort of a joint office hours coming up, so if you have any community concerns, we will be sitting together, listening, and I look forward to the visits that I have coming up in the next couple of weeks. Oh, and got to see the Independence School yesterday. It was an amazing trip. Yeah, it was, oh my gosh. Principal, he just, he does such a great job over there. Those kids are so lucky, just the opportunities that the school provides. I was really grateful for that tour, and they're doing a great job offering everything to our students. So everybody pray for a snow day, one more code red somewhere, right? And have a great week.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie.
Normally I would start out with all the activities that I've been engaged in, and I hope I have time to, I do have one major, but I have a public statement that I wanted to read this evening, and I have to tell you that Cozy Bailey changed a little bit about what I was going to say because he said something about the do nothing board, and I think when you hear my statement, you will understand that I am your, I am Lily Jessie, the elected school board representative for the Okaquan District and for Woodbridge High School. Tonight, I want to bring some clarity to my position as a school board member and to address the district that I represented, represent. Specifically, I want to address the many concerns raised in the past, in the past several school board meetings by my constituents concerning Woodbridge High School. In my capacity as a school board member, I was advised as early as August 15th, 2019, that there were concerns at Woodbridge High. After being made aware of the concerns of the parents of Woodbridge High students, I followed the protocol that the Virginia Board of Education, School Board Association provided, which is do not get involved in personnel matter unless it's substantial. I considered the Woodbridge matter substantial, and I also followed the protocol for Prince William County Schools. I made several attempts to speak with the superintendent about the situation as early as August 15th, but to no avail. In early December 2019, I was alerted that the complaints have been filed against me, that complaints had been filed against me, and that an investigation would follow. To date, or two and a half months later, I have not seen those complaints and do not know the specifics about the complaints, even though I've requested to see them several times on several occasions. Unfortunately, the filing of these complaints and the ensuing investigation resulted in my being told that I had to be recused, I had to recuse myself from any activities or matters related to Woodbridge High School's investigation. So I did nothing because I couldn't do anything. It was very disconcerting since I was elected, I was elected to represent the school district, and I had reported the concerns. I have, I was not made aware, present when any decisions were made concerning the investigations, nor was I involved in the approval and selection of the same attorney for both investigation, the investigation about me and the investigation about Woodbridge High School. I requested that these complaints against me be dismissed so that I can continue to serve my constituents. I would like to publicly thank the school board and the chair for his support the last couple of months in efforts to help me resolve the matters, and I appreciate your support. I am not an employee of Prince William County School System. I was elected by the Okaquan District to serve its constituents, and it's my honor to continue to do so. Thank you.
Mr. Wilk.
I'm just going to say, I haven't said a lot about this matter, but really, something really made me uncomfortable tonight when a sitting in principle of a building felt that she had to apologize for the actions of someone else in her building. It didn't sit well with me, and it's still in my mind, I'm uncomfortable about it, and still trying to think about why it was done, but it's bothered me. A lot of powerful things were said tonight, and I think the board has to do a lot of reflection on this matter. Thank you.
Ms. Ralston.
This is a little more upbeat. Last week, I had the pleasure of visiting Garfield High School, specifically the Student Leadership Council. I had a great conversation with a group of bright and focused future leaders where I encouraged them to advocate for themselves and as leaders. Thank you to Ms. Henderson and Mr. Flores for being a gracious host. I also want to mention some exciting news happened next, wait a minute, news happening next year, Garfield High School will add a, offer, a lie, a law, will offer a law and public safety program, a, and public safety program, as well as an environmental engineering program. Now, that was a lot of tie tone, but what I'm, what it says for us with being members, we are doing a pretty good job. Sometimes things don't work out the way you want them to, but keep working because if it wasn't good, you wouldn't be here. Thank you.
Jen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have, I'll try to be brief. Highlights of my visits this last few weeks, I attended an archery tournament at Reagan Middle School, first time I've ever done that, was great. Cool to see how that program has grown out of the talents and interest and personal commitment of, of one of our employees at that school, and how it's grown to, into a really nationally recognized program and filtered into the high school level as well as those kids grow. I also attended that all district choir event with Ms. Zagapor. We were there at the same event. It was awesome. I love music, I love the arts, so I'm always a, can be a fan of that, and it was very impressive. And it was at Stonewall Jackson High School, and they were great hosts, and they put on a great program there. Second point, I'm, I've now completed my listening tour with the 12 schools in the Gainesville District. That was a great experience, and I look forward to working with the schools and the teachers and principal of those schools in the coming months and years. Third point with regard to the budget, I would like to keep in mind the importance of getting as many of those resources into the classrooms to help our students and our teachers so that we can deliver a great education for all of our students and improve our educational outcomes for our students. That is a high priority for me regarding the budget. Fourth point is regarding the March 3rd holiday, I do feel like since we haven't used many of our snow days, that it's a very appropriate use of that. And also because, you know, when we have a lot of voters and parking is always an issue when we have school in session, we have a lot of schools where parking is an issue anyway. So I'm, I'm in favor of that just for the safety, security, and convenience of, of the citizens who use our schools for voting. Last thing I want to say is I, regarding the Woodbridge situation, once the, the requests are, or I guess the results are in from the independent investigation, I do hope that we move swiftly to resolve this issue to the satisfaction of all of the concerned individuals and families because it has gone on a long time, and it's very evident from the report of the ombudsman and others and citizen times, this is, this is a very important issue. We need to, we need to move swiftly on it once the results are in. So those are, that's my hope, so we can, we can resolve this. Other than that, I hope everybody has a great, a great week.
Ms. Jackson.
Good evening. I had a busy two weeks getting to know the administration, staff, and students in Brentsville. Since our last meeting, I toured Pennington Traditional School, Glencore, Piney Branch, Chris Young, Ellis, Haymarket, Victory Elementary Schools. I also had a great time meeting the staff at these schools, and I look forward to working with them. I also visited Brentsville High School and Stonewall High School, and I look forward to my upcoming visit to Patriot High School and talking to more students at Stonewall. I was fortunate to read at Haymarket Elementary School, I read to four classes, kindergarten through third grade. We participated, Jen, Ms. Wall and I participated in the One Book, One School program, and we met wonderful staff members, students, and the reading specialists. After one of the classes, I was, when I was done reading, students started asking me about my role as a school board member, and they advocated for raises for pretty much everyone. Last Wednesday, Supervisor Lawson invited me to an annual brunch to celebrate the hardworking crossing guards and National Crossing Guard Day. I just want to thank all crossing guards for keeping our students safe, and also happy School Board Clerk Week. Last night, I was invited to attend Black History Month at Marcella Middle School. It was a wonderful event that integrated technology, student participation, curriculum standards while celebrating Black history. As a lifelong learner, I loved this event and listening to students themselves as they discussed or portrayed important contributors to Black history. Ms. Worthington and the rest of the Black History Committee, staff, students, and administration did an exceptional job, and I can't wait to take my own kids next year. Getting out and seeing the students is the highlight of my weeks. I miss my students and remember them and my coworkers while reviewing the proposed budget. Lastly, the, last week, I, last meeting, I mentioned that we'd be holding office hours during the budget seating. Ms. Zagapor and I will be meeting for community office hours relating to the budget at 10 o'clock this Saturday in Manassas near Westgate. Please email us for details or check social media. The Coles District is Brentsville's neighbor. In addition to listening to budget concerns, for those who could not attend this meeting, we hope that we can answer questions pertaining to the role of the school board. And I just want to echo also the sentiments that Ms. Wall, Mr. Wilk said. I look forward to listening to people as they come in. I really believe in self-reflection, and so I will also be taking this time to reflect, and I also agree that I look forward to swift resolution when the investigation is over. Thank you.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to start off by saying thank you to the Dumfries for inviting me to the Black History Program. It was a joy to listen to Mysore be the keynote speaker, to speak about the importance of voting and the historical aspects of that related to the African-American community, as well as to see the Grand Park Choir. I love watching students do what they do best and excel. It was really exciting and very educational. I also want to thank Featherstone for, there was actually a conglomerate of schools in the Wivers District, as well as the Yapsco District that held a Title I event. I just want to thank the staff who took their time out to stay late. This was one of the first Title, Title I night events that I went to where gifted education was featured prominently, and it was right there at the table, like you couldn't miss it. And I just want to thank Dr. Mudd, and I'm sorry, who runs gifted right now? Please remind me somebody. The name, I can see her face, but I can't think of her name, but I, I just, the, yes, thank you, Ms. Bailey, the noticeable continued forward progress that we're making in educating our parent community about the programs and services that we offer. I also want to thank Fred Lynn for inducting me into a swarm. Thank you, Mr. Patterson, for giving me my shirt. Exciting times at Inventors, I'm sure we'll lay ahead in that. I also want to remind this board and the Board of County Supervisors, at our last meeting on the consent agenda, we approved a meeting for both of us, so if we could provide some available dates to the clerk's office so that we could get this meeting at least planned, it is important. We are a new board, both, both sets, and the sooner that we can get together and establish a working relationship, especially this time of year, on budgets and understanding what we do, the better results we can provide to the community, and since we all ran on that, I think it's important that we hold ourselves accountable for that. It's not to make decisions, it's for educational purposes and to establish relationships, which is important, especially this time of year. And I want to remind parents that the parent summer is now open on the eastern end of the county. If you are a parent of a rising eighth grader or anyone in high school, I would encourage you to attend. It is on March 14th at Potomac High School. It is free, and it is like a lifeline on how to prepare your child for high school and for a college afterwards. And I also want to echo Mr. Wilk's statement, not just seeing Heather Abney, but sitting up here tonight, I flashback to my years of being a student in Prince William County and for part of the reasons why I ran for being on the board. We cannot continue to do the same things and expect different results, and I'm not saying that negatively. I'm saying that to mean we're in a different time, we're in a different county, and we can do things differently. The board isn't in charge of employee or staffing, and it's not all Dr. Waltz's responsibility. It is his direct responsibility, but as a community, I think we can do better when we work together and understand everyone's roles and learn from our history in Prince William County and learn to do better with educational, educating our community, ourselves on issues, and checking our lens of privilege, because what's important and what matters to one person may be very different to another person, and how you hear things and how things are received, you don't have any control over that, and it's important to validate people when they speak their truth. So I'm just going to leave it at that, and thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. I'd like to thank all the members of Voice and the folks that came out tonight to, to talk about the budget and support the budget, and I encourage all folks who came out to talk to us about our budget, recognize that when you go to the Board of County Supervisors, they will eventually make the decisions that help us fund our desired budget, whatever that may look like in the next couple of weeks. And so I am extremely hopeful and excited by Chair Wheeler's resolution. so I am extremely hopeful and excited by Chair Wheeler's resolution last night of their advertised tax rate, and as noted earlier by the superintendent, that if they choose to go with, closer to the advertised tax rate, will come in much closer to our budget request. And, and I look forward to working closely with the Board of County Supervisors, providing them with the information they need, and hopefully working with them to come across with a budget that really works for all of Prince William County. So thank you to Voice for all of your efforts and all of that. I want to thank the folks that came out to talk about sustainability. Briefly, I serve on the Board of Visitors at the University of Virginia. I may have mentioned this earlier. Seven, eight years ago, the board decided to, you know, put together a sustainability proposal. They enacted it. They are seven years ahead of schedule on sustainability needs. We then voted last month on a sustainability program that would go carbon neutral, net zero by 2030. We don't know how we're going to get there. We, we kind of can get there 60% of the way, but we have no idea how to complete the 40%. But we set a goal that was high and a bar that was high. And I would ask the school board, and I've mentioned this, that when we put together the strategic vision, for the new strategic vision for the five-year plan, the sustainability become a very important part of that with a goal that you can set for net zero. Now, I don't know the right date for that and what we need to do, but I think that is something the board must look at, and I think it's critical. There's a lot of studies out there, a lot of ongoing divisions doing this kind of work, and I think we should look at best practices to try to achieve that. It is no longer something that is doing it just because you either believe or you don't believe in climate change. It is actually profitable. It is, has a great return on investment, so it just makes financial sense regardless of where you stand on climate change. Regarding economic disadvantaged funding, I have said this over and over again, my number one priority, two priorities are teacher salaries and economic disadvantaged funding. I agree that we have to do more, and I don't believe the current proposed budget abides by the spirit of the Stonewall Jackson Resolution that we voted on last year. And so, you know, I will continue to lobby board members and staff for more money for economics disadvantaged kids, especially at the middle and high school levels. And, and I'd like to see those monies earmarked for the kinds of things that actually improve equity and improve student performance for those students. I want to congratulate the school division for receiving the computer grant from the state. That is outstanding. Very excited about that. And then I want to leave with a statement. I don't know if I've shared this here in public, but I serve as Chair of the Audit Committee at the University of Virginia. And on my first day there, there was an orientation session, and I met with the, what they would equivalent be the university attorney, division counsel. And he went over what my responsibilities were as the audit chair, and it's audit compliance and risk management. And, and he said, you know, you can do audits on this and on that. And I said, well, who do I have to ask for to be allowed to do an audit? Do I have to ask the president of the university? He said, no. I said, do I have to ask the chairman of the Board of Visitors? He said, no. I said, do I have to ask you, the attorney, if I can do it? He said, no. I said, well, who do I answer to? And he looked me dead in the eye, and he said, you answer to the people of the Commonwealth of Virginia. Our responsiveness to what the folks who come into this chamber ask us to do is really important because we answer to the people of Prince William County. And so you have to hold us accountable. No one up here, I think, takes offense to what is said to us, and it is our absolute desire, need, and recognition of our responsibility that we do answer to you. We don't answer to the superintendent. We answer to the people of Prince William County and the students of Prince William County. And so you've heard the school board members here tonight echo their concerns about being responsive, and I will support their statements tonight. Thank you all, and have a good evening.